meeting to order. At 5:00 PM, we had a work session discussing electoral districts. And at this time, I will ask Pastor Eric Freets from Bridge Church to lead us in the prayer and pledge of allegiance and pronounce your name because I slaughtered it.
It is Freets.
Freets, okay. Please stand and remove your hats.
Let's pray. Father, I just thank you for this great county and the great people that represent this county. God, would you just bring about a supernatural wisdom, Lord, to just produce discernment, God, in the direction that this county is to go and all the things that we are to do here. God, I thank you that your blessing is on this county and will continue to be. And I just pray for a special blessing over each person here today and that's present on this board. Thank you for blessing them, Lord, with all that they need to do all that they have been called to do, in Jesus' name. Amen. Join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yeah. Please mute your cell phones and hold my calls. At this time, we're going to ask the county attorney to read the Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest reminder.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Anyone have any?
Madam Attorney, 2023, I bush hogged 20 acres for Allied Properties LLC. I think it was $1,000. I looked it up in my QuickBooks this morning to see if there was anything else. And prior to that, I did some work for them in 2016. But since I've been back in office in 2018, I personally haven't done but that one bush hogging job, which we were working right there beside it while we did it.
Okay, so would you experience any kind of financial gain from the project before you all tonight?
No. And one other thing, my wife does have a business, which she doesn't work directly for the developer. I just want to throw everything out there because I'm transparent as you could be, open book. She's never done any work for any property that I've ever voted on since 2018, nor would she, as well as I haven't. So I just want to put that out there.
Okay. And do you have a fixed opinion about the hearing that you're going to hear tonight based on all of that history?
I treat everybody the same. I treat everybody fair, so no, I'm good.
Okay. In my opinion, it doesn't seem like there's a conflict, but it's up to the board to make a motion if you think that there is one.
Does anyone think there's conflict? Hearing none, we're going to move to item three, approval of agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the agenda.
You have a motion for approval?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Next is public comment. Just to make sure everybody understands, if you've signed up for public comment but you expect to speak during the quasi judicial hearing, you need to wait until then. And we will proceed with James Mims. I have you signed up for both. Which one do you plan to speak on?
Quasi judicial. We've got a last, sir.
At the quasi judicial, yes, sir. All right, next we have Connie Hedrick.
Good evening, Commissioners, and welcome. Commissioner Brethwaite, it's interesting. So I have a call to action on the Commissioners this evening regarding the resolution for the Insurance Commission and opposition of the increase for the dwelling units. Let me gather myself. The North Carolina Rate Bureau is submitted to filing the North Carolina Department of Insurance the increased rates on dwelling policies by over 40% a year for the next two consecutive years. The filing also impacts rates on the beach plans, dwelling, and dwelling wind-only policies. Dwelling policies differ from homeowner policies typically covering second homes, vacation rentals, rental properties, unoccupied by owner-occupied dwellings. The Rate Bureau is requesting consecutive interest over a two-year period for the areas in Currituck, Dare, and Hyde Counties, requested annually on July 1st, 2026, and July 1st, 2027. The proposed dwelling rate filing request extended coverage rate increases from Currituck at 34.7%, and that of Dare County is going to be over 40%. For the inland areas of Currituck, Dare, and Hyde Counties, the rate increase of 37.4% is requested annually beginning on July 1st, 2026, and July 1st of 2027. These rate increases were filed by the North Carolina Rate Bureau on October 30. The public hearing ends on November 19th, so we've had a call to action to let our North Carolina residents know. The latest last-rate dwelling interest approved by the North Carolina Department of Insurance was on November 1st, 2024, at a rate of 14.9%. These are unsustainable rates and continued increase. The cost undoubtedly will offset a short-term and year-round renters, again moving the needle for sustainable housing costs where many insurance carriers in North Carolina are already limiting coverage. Decreased exposure for insurance companies means increased exposure for all of our residents and communities. Policyholders may choose to decrease their coverage on their dwelling to be insufficient for the structure value, increasing the risk. Inadequate insurance covers affects the ability of communities to recover from storm effects. So, public comment ends on November 19th, so I'm asking the Commission if you've done anything to prepare for a resolution and opposition of this rate increase.
I believe we had already instructed the staff to send a letter in opposition to the rate increase.
We have not sent a letter. We have shared information on the county website, and we've also shared it with property owners associations, but we can draft a letter and have that.
Absolutely, and we need to get it sent out tomorrow. I thought we had already done it from our previous discussion because the rate increases are unsustainable for the average person. It's bad enough with property values going up, taxes, and insurance that people are paying as much as they are for food and clothing just about, so absolutely.
Okay, thank you. If any of the residents want the address to email, it's 2025dwellingandfire@ncdoi.gov. If you would like to reach out to Steve or Hedrick or myself on Facebook, we'll send it to you, give you some information so that you can go ahead and respond to the public comments before the 19th. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Could you say the address one more time?
It is 2025dwelling, D-W-E-L-L-I-N-G, and fire, F-I-R-E, at ncdoi.gov.
Thank you.
You can also go to the North Carolina Department of Insurance website.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Kimberly, and I'll try not to mess your last name up, Akil.
I actually think that I possibly signed up for the wrong one.
Are you here about the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move you over to... It looks like you started signing up.
I did. Sorry.
I'll put your name down.
Thank you.
But just for my... How do you spell your last name?
A-K-K-A-D. Mm-hmm.
How do you say it?
Akad.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
I'll try not to slaughter it.
Sorry about that.
And then Rachel Brown?
Same, same exact situation.
Okay, and I see, are you Rachel Banks Brown?
Rachel Lort Brown, yes.
Lort, yeah, okay, so you're signed up as well. Okay, that's all we have for public comments. Or anyone that wishes to discuss something that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment, and we're going to move into quasi judicial evidentiary hearing. But before we do that, I'm going to read a statement because I want everybody to understand what the ground rules are. The Commissioners up here tonight are setting as a quasi judicial board. It's very similar to going to a court of law. The only thing we can consider is evidence, not hearsay, not opinion, it's evidence. The applicant's going to present evidence, and if you have evidence to present opposite of the applicant, you can present it. But we cannot make a decision based on opinion and hearsay because that's just the way the legal quasi judicial hearing works. So I'm going to read this for you. A special use permit hearing is an evidentiary hearing where the Board of Commissioners must make a quasi judicial decision. An evidentiary hearing will be held for the Board of Commissioners to gather competent material and substantial evidence to establish the facts of the case. All testimony is made under oath. The applicant or opposing parties shall establish written findings of facts and conclusions of law. Parties withstanding may participate fully in the evidentiary hearing, including presenting evidence, cross-examining witnesses, objecting to evidence, and making legal arguments. Non-parties that don't have standing may present competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive. Typical special use permit hearing at the Board of Commissioners goes like this. We're going to have a swearing-in of the witnesses and the speakers. There's going to be a presentation by the staff on the application, the required presentation by applicant or authorized agent. That means the applicant will do a presentation, and then we'll have the public participation period, and then we'll have applicant rebuttal, and then the Board of Commissioners will deliberate and make a decision. I will ask you to not make outbursts and to not razz or anything because this is a legal judicial hearing that we're hearing tonight. So we're going to be respectful for everyone. That includes who's for and who is against. So at this time, the item is PB 25-18 Millstone Crossing Allied Properties LLC is requesting a preliminary plat special use permit for a 41-lot conservation subdivision located south of Stone Street on both sides of Tolls Creek Road, tax map 22, parcels 1B, formerly known as parcel 1 and parcel 48, Moyoc Township. The properties are owned by Maurice and Thelma Steingold trustees. So this time, I'm going to ask anybody that intends to speak in favor of this application and anybody that intends to speak in opposition to come forward, put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. If you're not sworn in, you will not speak. That's a requirement to speak. I'm going to have to share Bibles.
There's some more up at the front.
There's some more up here at the front. Left hand, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you, God?
Yes, I do.
All right, you've been sworn in. This time, we're going to ask the staff to do their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to you and the Board this evening. This is, as you said, a conservation subdivision request, preliminary plat special use permit. Here's a context map showing the areas that are under consideration tonight. You can see the outline in blue. Those are the parcels that are part of this application, Stone Street being here, and the proposed, the Tolls Creek Elementary School here, just to kind of orient you to the site.
Is that Tolles Bay Colony to the south?
Yeah, to the...
To the east.
Or the east?
East, yeah.
Yeah.
The east.
Southeast.
Yeah. You can see that the northern portion of this proposed subdivision is zone SFM, which is single-family residential mainland, and the southern portion is zone ag or agriculture. So we will apply standards to each portion of the zoning, and you'll see that the proposed subdivision does meet the required dimensional standards of the ordinance. I will call your attention, I did place a revised staff report at your seat this evening. There were a couple, just very minor edits to the staff report, basically related to that, one being in your staff analysis paragraph, it's underlined that the proposed subdivision consists of SFM and ag portions, and each will be reviewed under the separate dimensional standards. And then on the land use plan page where it talks about land use plan policies, it was improperly identified as O2-preserved lands. The O2 is reserved land, so that's the green, and we'll get to that here, the next slide. You can see the green here is the O2-reserved lands, transect of the land use plan, and the G1 is the tan, the light tan, which is low-density growth.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Can't hear her. Real loud.
Okay. You'll speak up.
This is the... This property is in the Moyoc Small Area Plan boundary, and it is classified as rural by the Moyoc Small Area Plan. I'll go ahead and let you know that the rural classification of that plan envisions low-density residential at densities less than one unit per acre. Here's an overall view of the proposed subdivision, with the white areas being the proposed lots and the green areas being conservation open space. The applicant's proposing a connection to county water, onsite septic systems, and suitable site evaluations have been provided by the applicant for each of the proposed lots. Stormwater, they're proposing wet ponds, and then the streets will be 50-foot wide rights-of-way with sidewalks on both sides of the street. So the northern tract, this is the tract that's zoned SFM, single-family residential mainland. It's 30.08 acres. The proposed density of this portion is .33 dwellings units per acre, which is 10 lots. The smallest lot size proposed is 30,188 square feet, and the minimum open space requirement for this portion is 40%, and they're providing 62.8% open space on this portion. They will also provide street trees landscaping, as well as conservation subdivisions require major arterial screening. It's major arterials in Tolls Creek Road qualifies, so they're proposing that screening here out along Tolls Creek Road. And then there's a proposed cluster mailbox for this portion of the subdivision, the northern portion here at the entrance. The southern portion is zoned agriculture, 79.81 acres is the area. The proposed density of this portion is .39 dwelling units per acre, proposing 31 lots, a minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet. Proposed open space, a minimum 60%, and they're proposing 69.3% open space. There is a small portion of wetlands here. You can see .53 acres of wetlands at the rear, at the south, southern portion.
Ms. Turner, how many acres was that you said?
79.81.
Thank you.
Again, street trees and screening along Tolls Creek Road, and a cluster mailbox on this side is here, adjacent to the entrance. This is a call-out of the area here where there's some proposed amenities in this area. There's a proposed picnic area, as well as a dog park area in the open space. This particular subdivision also is required to pay a fee in lieu for parks and recreation fee prior to final plat. And these are just zoomed-in views of the amenities plan that was provided, some potential amenities plan with some benches in the picnic area here, a walkway, some landscaping beds, and then here you can see the dog park area that's proposed. The northern tract is proposed to have a road with swales on either side of the road, both sides of the road, and the southern tract you can see is proposed for curb and gutter. There's a typical lot layout. So the policies of the land use plan that may apply to this request are these policies related to land use. The policies emphasize using the future land use map as a guiding tool alongside civic or small area plans, community character, and...
Is that microphone working, Jenny?
I'm not sure.
No, we can't hear.
Where is?
Light green, is it on?
I don't know if it's... I don't know if this...
There's not a light on this microphone.
There's not a light on it?
The Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan policies.
It's on, okay.
It's better.
Feel loud.
What happened to the microphone? It used to hang down.
So there are also policies related to public services and infrastructure for new development. Policies support effective stormwater management, continued enforcement of adequate public facilities, especially school capacity, and environmentally appropriate wastewater solutions are permitted for low-density areas. There are policies here related to transportation and environment, as well as parks and rec. Some specific policies for the two transects, the O2 and the G1, as well as the northern mainland and the Moyoc Small Area Plan policy. In order to approve a special use permit, the applicant needs to demonstrate that the proposed use is in compliance with the UDO and will not endanger the public health or safety, injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands, and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, be in conformity with the land use plan or other adopted plans, and not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public school facilities. I know the applicant's here with their experts to bring their testimony. I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board has for me at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Turner?
Yes, I have a question.
For us.
Okay, sorry.
You get to come in a few minutes. Any questions from the Board?
It's 10 lots on the northern portion, correct?
Correct.
I do have a couple of questions. So, Tolls Creek Road bisects these two parcels, correct?
Correct.
And on one side, the northern side, is a different classification, right? We're at, it's an O2 area?
Different zoning and different land use plan classification, yes.
Right. What kinds of, particularly related to the northern parcel, what kind of special considerations have we considered in proposing a development on that side?
Well, the zoning's in place with the residential zoning, and the land use plan speaks to low-density single-family residential, so that would be what would be permitted in that area.
Are you aware of, are you aware of the designation of, and I might be wrong if you can double-check the map and the land use plan? So it looks to me on the map for the land use plan that all of the lands along Tolls Creek to the north and east of Tolls Creek are considered, or natural heritage areas?
Significant natural heritage areas.
Significant natural heritage areas.
I can double-check the GIS map.
You can't, yeah, you can't really, it's hard to see in the map. You have to blow it up, and so I couldn't tell if all of the areas to the north and east of Tolls Creek are under that designation or not. It kind of looks like it, but it's hard to tell.
Okay. I can take a look if you want.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, other questions? So, single-family designation is one unit per acre, correct?
It is, depends on the land use plan transect, it's going to be less than one unit per acre in that area.
Okay, and then the other parcel is zoned agriculture?
Correct.
And the density on that is?
Be .4 as a maximum with 60% open space.
.4 dwelling units per acre?
Mm-hmm.
Which equals out to?
One per two and a half acres.
One, yeah, one per two and a half acres.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Used to be one per three.
So there is still the .33 dwelling units per acre with 50% open space.
So if you do 60%, it...
You get that additional density.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
So, with agriculture, there's no more just you have to do one house on three acres?
It's a density calculation. So what they're proposing is more than 60% open space, so their density calculation is .4 dwelling units per acre.
So if you leave a lot of open space, you can do a higher density.
Correct.
Anyone else?
Not this time.
All right, I'm going to ask the applicant to do their presentation. You come in a little while.
All right, just a simple question, something you should have asked.
You'll have the opportunity in a few minutes.
I believe Jenny's pulling up my presentation. And we did just pass out binders with the evidence, some of the evidence we plan to present tonight, affidavits from our witnesses, as well as reports and studies that we've done in support of this application.
Can't hear you.
Is there any way to reposition that microphone?
Set it on a stack of books.
It's connected to the...
Can we turn the overhead monitors on to help pick up? What we have up there, they're in red. I don't know if they would pick her up anymore or not.
I'll try to project.
Okay.
There you go.
There we go.
I can hear you now.
Did her in high school, so I can figure this out. Good evening, Chair O'Neill and Board of Commissioners. My name is Ashley Honeycutte Charazis. I'm a land use attorney with Parker Poe, 301 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh, here on behalf of the applicant this evening. Millstone Crossing, as Jenny just went over, is a proposed conservation subdivision that will feature 41 new attractive homes and almost 68% open space in an area that is contemplated to support this type of single-family detached housing. is contemplated to support this type of single-family detached housing with significant open space preservation on the Imagine Currituck Future Land Use Map. These .6 acre and larger lots and associated amenities and open space are permitted under this property's single-family residential mainland and agriculture zoning, which contemplates development like this proposed neighborhood. We will present competent material and substantial evidence on each of the required factors in section, UDO Section 2.4.6D here on the screen, using four witnesses this evening. Mark Bissell, a professional engineer, will address Factors 1, 3, and 4 on not endangering the public health or safety, conformity with the land use plan, and the ability to provide adequate public schools. Andy Deal, a civil engineer, will address Factor 1 with respect to stormwater management. Lyle Overcash, a traffic engineer with Kimley Horn, will also address Factor 1 on the plan not endangering the public health or safety as it relates to traffic. And Hunter Howell, a licensed North Carolina real property appraiser, will address Factor 2 related to the impacts to adjoining property in harmony and unity with the area. And we reserve our right to call other witnesses as needed. At this time, again, we passed up some binders, your clerk, to streamline the presentation of our evidence this evening. Again, these have sworn affidavits from each of the witnesses summarizing their testimony as well as exhibits that we will admit into evidence this evening. At this time, I would like to call Mr. Bissell. Mr. Bissell, please state your name and address for the board.
Mark Bissell. My business address is 3512 North Croatan Highway in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina.
And can you please describe your background and experience for the board?
Yes, I'm a professional engineer at Bissell Professional Group. I have a degree in civil engineering from Duke University, and I'm a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina. I have more than 40 years' experience in working on this type of development plan throughout North Carolina, have been preparing subdivision plans like the one before this board around here, in fact, for over 40 years that comply with county requirements for design and utilities, access, public facilities, et cetera.
At this time, I would like to tender Mark Bissell as an expert in the field of civil engineering and site design.
Without objection.
Can you please explain for the board your role in this project?
Sure, I'm the lead engineer for this project, and I did oversee the layout and the design of the special use permit plans for Millstone Crossing.
And if the board would like to turn to page three of the preliminary plat sheet, which is at Tab 2 in the binders, and is also shown on the screen. Mr. Bissell, can you please describe this document for the board?
Yes, this is the general layout for the project and part of the overall preliminary plats in the middle. It is 41 new 30,000 minimum square foot lots for new homes in a conservation subdivision layout, which actually the UDO requires these days. And the reservation of about 68 percent open space, preservation of natural features, all to be developed in one phase with direct access to Tulsa Creek Road. Our sidewalks that will be provided on both sides of the street, there'll be an eight-foot multi-use path that will run along to the entrance to the south neighborhood, curb and gutter throughout the south neighborhood due to the more sparser range, but you'll see on the northern tract, that'll be a standard open swale section. The site is split by Tulsa Creek Road with 10 residential lots on the northern side and 31 residential lots on the south side, again with 30,000 square foot minimum side. The roadways are offset by one another by, I believe it is 650 feet. The property to the north side, again, is owned, single-family residential mainland, which has a 25,000 square foot minimum lot size. We've actually proposed 30,000. And we're showing, you can see the open space that's being proposed. There's a male kiosk being proposed near the entrance, and there are buffers being proposed along, you can see a vegetated buffer along Tulsa Creek Road. Also see where there's going to be reforestation of a good bit of the existing farmland. This is actually a farm tract right now, so we'll be proposing reforestation of some of that land. And there are two stormwater management ponds, as you see on the plan, that will collect stormwater and slowly release that to existing wetlands that range to the creeks to the north. There's about, I mentioned reforestation, it's almost nine and a half acres of reforestation that will be provided at a rate of 40 mixed hardwoods per acre in accordance with UDO standards. Property then to the south side, which is owned agriculture, requires the larger 30,000 square foot lots and 40 percent open space, which is being preserved in a conservation subdivision layout. Again, this one has a male kiosk also near the Tulsa Creek Road. This one also includes an amenity area you'll see down near the main stormwater pond, which will be designed for the residents. There's going to be a nice landscape picnic area and a dog park. The buffers that you see here are typical for this type of subdivision. We have, again, the 25-foot streetscape along Tulsa Creek Road, a 50-foot farm buffer along the western side, and then a buffer along the eastern side of the track that actually ranges from 50 over 100 feet, which also includes a four-foot berm planted with pampas grass to create a visual buffer to that residential area to the east.
Is that what the two dashed lines are?
Do you want to cheat 11?
Well, there's a dashed line that shows a swale in there that's between the lots and the berm.
Yeah, what's the image in the bottom right of the slide that's up right now?
That's really a continuation of the track that's off of the bottom of the slide. And that area is to be, is basically going to be left, is open space and will be reforested.
And that's where the wetlands are located too, right?
It is.
Mr. Bissell, can you go back to, not physically go back, but when you say the area on the north tract along Tulsa Creek is going to be reforested? What does that look like? What kind of trees, fast-growing, slow-growth combo? What kind of trees will it be reforested with?
Well, there's a, it's mixed hardwood is what the UDO specifies. I don't know exactly.
Okay, that's enough, that's fine. I'm not trying to get a name of a tree or anything, just kind of get an idea.
And can you please explain how the project is providing potable water to residents and managing wastewater?
Yes, there's an existing 12-inch water main located on Tulsa Creek Road that will tap, and new water lines will be run north and south from that main throughout the subdivision. So potable water and fire protection will be provided in accordance with the UDO standards and the North Carolina Fire Code, and the water system will be modeled to demonstrate adequate flow and pressure at the final design stage so that we can show that we can meet maximum day demand as well as fighting a fire at the same time.
And for the wastewater?
And Albridge Regional Health has evaluated each of the 41 lots and classified them as suitable for development and provided criteria for the design of each lot that would meet the requirements for the subdivision.
Mr. Bissell? In here, it says, "Albridge Health has provisional..."
Provisionally seen, please.
Yeah, okay, they haven't approved it, they gave provisional approval. I saw in here, I read in here somewhere earlier that the septic systems, the final, I guess the, where the house is going to be built, it's got to be one foot, one to two feet, minimum 12 inches higher than the height of the septic tank or field, though I read there somewhere, so requiring to have 12 inches higher than what the septic height's going to be. So with the low drainage and the flat lands in here, I think you're going, only doing one to 12, 12 to 24 inches of fill on these lots to get them up higher. And then, do you know the height where the septic tank is going to be? Because you're going to have to go another 12 inches above that, so could you potentially be needing three foot of fill and then have a nice big three-foot mound of house sitting on?
We typically put the finished grade of the house about half a foot above the...
Well, it's sitting here, it's got, I read in here somewhere, it's had to be a minimum 12 inches above, of the, the final has to be a minimum 12 inches above the septic field height. So that's what you're going to be doing, the minimum 12 inches above that then?
If that's what the health department requires, that's...
Well, that's what I read in this, I forgot what page I can find.
70. I think you're talking about page 70.
It might have been page 70, yeah, they said that, and that's probably gets part of the provisionals, they want to see the final layout, because, I mean, just looking at that, you could have a high-mounded fill in there. And I'm just, I was looking at the layer of the land and the drainage and the low, it says it's low, and there's a lot of clay in there right now. So I'm just concerned if that runoff's going to start getting into the, if it's that high, could it potentially get into the stormwater ponds?
What we typically do is...
What's that?
Page 71 for the south side.
Yeah, okay, that's what it was on. Yeah, is that where it says the 12 inches?
It says 12 inches.
Yeah, 12 inches, yeah, so. It says you have to go 12 inches higher than the final. I mean, that just could be, that could be a tall mound of dirt there.
What we typically do is use, is dig the stormwater ponds and then just do a kind of a mass fill across the lot areas where you would then intersperse those building paths with swales that flow toward, back toward the stormwater pond.
Right, but I was concerned about the wastewater piece, though. When you forget the final height of the wastewater requirements for the proper layout and the drainage for them to give final approval, then it says that you got to go 12 inches higher than that for the final fill for the house.
Right. Yeah, and that's not unusual. We've done a preliminary grading plan that shows generally how that will work together.
Okay. So no concern of it being so high, it could be drainage, the drain fields could be seeping into the stormwater?
No, sir.
And is this something that's reviewed at the next stage?
It will be, in more detail.
And Mr. Bissell, do the plans comply with all applicable UDO provisions, and did it clear all the comments, including those made by the county stormwater consultant?
Yes, we have gone through two rounds of review and have completed the TRC review process. Responses are attached to the affidavit, and all the questions have been adequately answered. The stormwater consultant has agreed with what has been proposed at this stage, and there are no issues unresolved.
And does this use present concerns related to the public health or safety?
No, the layout and the use, as shown on the plans, will not endanger the public health or safety.
And you already mentioned this will be constructed in one phase. What is the earliest date that you expect the applicant to receive a certificate of occupancy for the homes in this subdivision?
Assuming this plat is approved and the remaining permit process goes smoothly, I would say the very earliest would be the end of 2026, more likely the end of 2027.
And turning to factor three, are the proposed uses in conformity with the Imagine Currituck Land Use Plan?
Yes, they are. The uses and the plans are consistent with the Imagine Currituck Land Use Plan policies, addressing density, infrastructure, recreation, and open space, walkability. These include land use and density. The proposed density is consistent with future land use map designation, with the north tract designated O2 reserved lands and the south tract designated as G1 low-density growth on the future land use map. An appropriate land use and development type for both of these classifications includes low-density, single-family, rural residential that prioritizes the preservation of open space and natural landscapes. The O2 classification recommends up to 0.4 dwelling unit per acre on the north tract, and we have, you can see, set that back significantly from Tulsa Creek Road to provide a nice buffer there. And the maximum density is actually only one lot with three acres, the proposed density. The G1 classification on the south tract recommends up to one dwelling unit per acre, and we're, of course, proposing a dwelling density well below that at .4 dwelling units per, actually .39 dwelling units per acre. Consistent with infrastructure, new water lines and services will be directed at an area targeted for growth, consistent with Policies 1.2, 3.1, and 3.2. Also, additional stormwater management and stormwater mitigation will improve drainage and help mitigate any flooding hazards consistent with Policy 4.1. For transportation, we're providing paved public roadways and drainage infrastructure, and including roadway and pedestrian circulation within the proposed neighborhoods. Each tract will have direct access to Tulsa Creek Road to assure adequate access, and will construct a pedestrian sidewalk along the internal streets consistent with Policies 1.5 and 2.1 and the Connect Currituck Pedestrian Master Plan. Parks and Recreation, we're consistent with Policy 2.1 by providing internal sidewalks to promote pedestrian connections in the area. Additionally, consistent with Policy 3.2, a recreation and parkland fee that will be calculated and paid prior to final plat approval, and that's in addition to onsite recreation amenities that are being provided.
Is the proposed use in conformity with the northern mainland area guidance as well?
Yes, it is. The northern mainland land use policy 1.1 calls to foster growth and development while maintaining the distinctive natural environment and rural character of the community. This neighborhood is in an appropriate density that preserves the natural environment and provides appropriate buffering for streets and adjacent properties. And the northern mainland's Moyoc Subarea Policy 2.2 calls to encourage clustered housing developments to preserve these natural environments and the rural character, which is exactly what we're doing here.
Thank you, Mr. Bissell. I have no further questions for this witness. Again, his affidavit is at Tab 1 in your binder, and I will tender him to the board for any additional questions.
Yes, I have a question. What is the proposed buffer between the adjoining property owners? We've talked about the buffers along the highway, and you've got adjoining property owners that will be curious about what you're proposing for a buffer along there as well. Any adjoining property owner?
Does this show up?
He's using a pointer.
Does a pointer show up?
Sometimes it does.
No, it's not on, no. I don't see that either.
I think she's complaining.
Okay. You can't hear me?
I don't...
I can't hear him.
Oh, Mr. Bissell, okay. Because I've never been accused of being quiet.
Neither one of those pointers or mouses is working.
Yeah, they're not working. You can verbally tell me what you plan, what your plan is for the adjoining property owners.
All right, if you look at the cul-de-sac there on the south tract, the very minimum there in the corner of that lot is 50 feet, but you can see that it widens to probably 150 feet as you go to the north on the other side, and the same thing, it has a minimum of 50, but then it widens... but then it widens to probably 100 feet.
So there's no buffer except for just the setback?
There's vegetation.
Is there a vegetative buffer?
There's also a berm along that eastern property line, a four-foot-high berm that's planted with vegetation on top. And that's something that was discussed at the, at the community meeting in response to a concern by a property owner over there who actually requested that berm, and the developer agreed to provide it.
Yeah, I just, to me, if you're going into an area where there's existing properties and homes, an adequate buffer between anything new should always be proposed. And I just want to make sure that whatever is, if this is approved, that we have adequate buffers that the existing people won't really even know it's there from a visual.
Right. And there's an existing lot and house on the north tract that we're kind of developing around, so we kind of went, provided some extra buffering in that area to minimize impact to that existing property.
Then my next question is, did I hear the attorney, the representative, to say that the reviewing agencies had, said you had met the requirements?
Of the ordinance?
Yes.
The TRC?
Yes.
So the reviewing agency signed off?
Yes.
Okay. Next.
I have a question about the drainage. It says, since the soils are relatively poorly drained and do not readily support the installation of infiltration-based stormwater management systems, that you're gonna install the wet ponds, but then it says you're gonna incorporate that into a model of the existing outfall ditch. Can you elaborate on that ditch and where that will end up going?
Well, I could, but I think I'd, I'd rather let Andy Deal address that question when he gets up for his testimony, because he's the one who's actually taking the lead role on the stormwater management.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Bissell, you said that no phasing is planned. In this area that has already a lot of congestion, as well as a proposed school that's gonna further increase traffic, is phasing something the applicant is opposed to?
Well, the thing is, it's only 41 lots, which is real, you know, on larger projects, we typically phase them into phases that are about that size. So this is really the size of a typical phase of a larger project, which is why we.
But most of those are not in areas quite as congested as Tulsa Creek Road.
Yeah.
And phasing would allow, in case the school doesn't open on time or as it opens, it would minimize the construction area of the subdivision. So it's something that I would think would be a good practice to ease us into even more congestion on Tulsa Creek Road.
Question for county manager, is, I know DOT is proposing a portion of Tulsa, is this gonna be in that portion of 2026 that they're gonna be widening and repaving?
The paving project, when we had that meeting with DOT, with their representative, with test judge, they said February 2026.
It's just part of that.
Yes, that's part of it.
This'll be part of that area.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it'll be from the water tower to Guinea Road or, where do they?
It's from.
It's right to Fellowship Baptist Church, I believe, is what they said.
Tulsa Creek Road from Guinea Road to 168.
Okay.
They'll let that contract in February of 2026.
So February construction will be going on with the road as long as, okay.
From Guinea Road, which direction?
Guinea Road South.
Yeah, Guinea Road South.
Guinea Road South.
Sorry, South.
Okay.
Is what they said in that meeting.
Out here.
Yeah.
168.
Yeah, all the way to the, to the light, past River's Edge.
Yes, sir. I was gonna ask staff of, if you were able to find an answer to Commissioner Breathwaite's answer about that overlay. You said you were gonna look that up.
Yeah, I do. I have some maps I can show you and.
Yeah, so did you find, you say you have an answer to that?
Yes, I believe so, yes. Yeah. It would probably be best if I could, do me to do that now or would be.
Well, I was just gonna, because, I was gonna follow up then with Mr. Bissell if there's an issue with that. I don't know if you can come up there or how we're gonna do that. I mean, I'd like staff to show us that.
Okay.
To answer that, and then we may have a question for Mr. Bissell.
Okay. Let's see.
But you need to come up here to do that?
Yeah, I'm just gonna save something so I can try to pull it up there.
Yeah, I think there's a map, but it's, it's, it's the whole county, so the map is so, the resolution's so tiny, it's hard to tell.
That's why I just wanted to address it, then if we had any questions after that, we may not, but at least we will see it, though.
It's not, they should not list it on the county GIS page.
It is, but the, sometimes the GIS takes, takes a good bit to load at this time of the day. So I just was gonna try to show you in a different way. See here. There we go.
While we're waiting on that, I have another question. Has a, I know it's still, this is just the preliminary plat, I get that. Has a builder been chosen for these properties?
I'm not aware of whether one has or not.
Okay. Is that a question for the applicant himself? Okay.
If I may, I'll probably use the computer here. I can't get this to save or anything. Significant natural heritage areas, is that in state map? That's you. All right.
I couldn't get it to work either.
Here we go.
There we go.
The blue.
Okay.
Pointer, pointers. I am gonna have to try to use, I couldn't get it to save, so I'm gonna have to try to use the GIS. It's not.
So, Troy, your concern or question was, how is that, how is that relevant to the, to the, to the.
He's been on the side of the roads there. Yeah, that north side of, north side of Tulsa Creek, that north plot, the land use plan just says that we should take special consideration for these kinds of areas. So if there's any kind of development that's going on there, I think that warrants a separate kind of evaluation.
Okay.
Versus the southern.
Oh, that's on the northern piece.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you can't really tell from the map if that northern part, all of that northern part is in that zone, because it's the way that.
It's, it's not. It's, it's aligned right in here, right across here. This is from our maps, Commissioner Breathwaite, but when you go to the North Carolina One map and you look at their mapping, it's a slightly different configuration.
But it is on the northern side.
Yeah, and I can, I have it here.
You're saying it does impact or it does not?
Is it okay if I show?
Yes. So this is from our GIS. You can see that's the property gallery there. That's the north.
Okay, that's why I thought, that's my thought.
So that, so that northern, western part of that.
Yeah, and then this is what I found on the, their map, which appears to be less of an area.
It's north of their, north side of theirs, is what you're saying, Jenny?
It's not north of the north side, it's, it's across the property.
Across the middle of it.
But it's.
Oh, it's right down the middle.
Is there anything?
You have the map pulled up.
Wait, I'm on the wrong side. Or you're talking here.
The property that we're talking about, there's the whole property that goes all the way into there.
Right, and just a portion of this property is, for tonight, it's just this area.
Right, gotcha, okay.
And that is on the north or the south?
Is it a portion of it?
The north.
It's on the north side.
So it has no bearing on what we're doing tonight?
This is the property to your end. This is the line, so this is that portion.
So a portion of it. So is there, is there houses in there proposed? Get it real quick. There's the north side. There's the north side. Okay.
So it does, it does not affect it then?
Neither's not.
Just the road going through, that's the only thing, right? It would be, it would be road and buffers and.
Jenny, show me a piece of property. We're, we're looking at what's inside the blue.
I'm notorious about.
No, okay, okay. And the lines?
It does go through, it does go through.
But the houses are, are south.
Oh, it does go through.
I think, there's the line.
Well, that's a good catch, Troy.
Yeah?
The line, right here.
No, but it does cut through. So we're gonna have to give it some special consideration.
But the houses are not in the parcel.
It's part of the.
But it's a part of the parcel.
This is, this is. Yeah, it's part of the, and the ponds.
But if they're gonna be using that, it's gonna drain, drain into that area.
Mr. Chair?
The stormwater's the only thing there.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Okay, yes. Now that we got that question answered, can we resume the hearing?
Yes. Ms. Turner, does this crossing have any effect on the proposed houses being built? Is any, are any of the proposed houses in that area?
I would need to study it a little bit more to give a confidence.
Okay, we'll let you study it a minute. Okay, you can continue on. All right, we've had questions for Mr. Bissell. Does anyone have any more questions for Mr. Bissell?
Not right now.
I have one quick question for Mr. Bissell. Does that designation from the state have any impact on the land use plan designation or the UDO requirements?
No, and normally we see, and actually when I looked at the state map that she showed, it appears to approximately correspond with the wood line, and that's what we would typically see. We've encountered this before. It's normally an area that has, you know, a strong stand of woods, it has wildlife and so forth that you'd be interested in, you know, in mapping and any heritage trees and that sort of thing, but you don't typically see that on farmland. So I would go along with what the state mapping has shown and say that this really, this doesn't really have an impact on natural heritage areas.
It is the proposed development on all the, all on the existing farmland, not where the trees are.
It is. It's all in the farmland.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask him one question?
Yes, Mark, don't leave yet.
Don't leave, we didn't let you off the hook yet. He did say, far as the, it's all on farmland. Y'all aren't planning, there's nothing far as the existing trees, nothing's coming out, correct?
No, no, in fact, we're, we're developing within the farmland, and then we're reforested, you know, some of the existing farmland.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
If there are no more questions for this witness, we will excuse him and call Mr. David Deal, Andy Deal.
Both names are correct.
I'll call you Andy. Mr. Deal, please state your name and address for the board.
Yes, my name is Andy Deal. My office address is 322 West Wilkinson Street, Killdable Hills. I'm also a Currituck resident in Point Harbor.
Can you please describe your background and experience for the board?
Yes. I'm an engineer with Deal Engineering. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Virginia Tech. I'm a licensed engineer, professional engineer here in the state of North Carolina. I have more than 32 years of experience as a civil engineer and have worked on development plans throughout eastern North Carolina. I've studied and consulted on and helped design stormwater management plans for many develops in, here in the coastal region.
At this time, I would like to tender Mr. Deal as an expert in the field of stormwater management design.
Without objection.
Can you please explain for the board your role in this project?
I am consulting with the design, with the applicant team on the stormwater modeling and management plan for the Millstone Crossing subdivision.
And can you please describe the drainage in this area?
Yes. I've studied the drainage around the site. The northern tract generally drains to the existing wetland to the north, which then drains out to the Northwest River to the north. A small portion for the southern tract, a small portion of the front of that southern tract, the north end, drains towards the highway, toward the ditch along Tulsa Creek Road, but the majority of the tract drains to the south to what's referred to in, on the county GIS as Stone South Outlet Ditch. And that runs through the property from west to east and continues southeast and ultimately to Tulsa Creek Road.
And how?
Tulsa Creek.
And how will this development manage stormwater?
Okay, this is to address your question. At first, I'm going to restate what we had written. Since the soils are relatively poorly drained and do not readily support the installation of infiltration-based stormwater management systems, this project will utilize wet ponds in order to meet Currituck County's stormwater management ordinance requirements. One pond is proposed in the low area adjacent, on the south side. One pond is proposed in the low area adjacent to Tulsa Creek Road. A second, larger pond on the south tract will accept runoff from the majority of the development with a controlled outlet to the existing ditch. The north tract will drain to a wet pond that is being proposed adjacent to the wetlands to the north of the development property. This planned configuration honors existing drainage patterns. And if I could go off for just a moment. So poorly drained soils describes basically Currituck County north of here. It's, we, if you drive along, the farms tend to have lots of ditches, because our soils do not readily, our near-surface soils don't readily infiltrate water that falls on them. So we have more runoff than we do in the south end of the county. So in those conditions, infiltration systems, your dry infiltration basin or infiltration trenches, those sorts of systems typically don't work without massive amendment to the soil conditions. So typically, wet ponds are utilized both to meet deeners' stormwater quality and treatment requirements, as well as to meet our peak flow requirements. In our case, for the ditch particularly that you mentioned, the south ditch there, so, let me see which, yeah, we've got the right slide. So you can see, can you guys see my cursor?
Yep.
Okay, you can see this ditch running across here, and you can actually see it go into wetland here. It is draining from up here in this area, down, and then across the property. What we are saying when we're talking about modeling that ditch in our pond is that we are not just going to analyze our subdivision and how much water we put in that ditch. Step one on this will be to model that ditch from the wetland all the way to the top, including the drainage areas, everything upstream that comes into it, to determine what the flows and hydraulic grade lines are in that ditch. And then, when we do our design, we will take our design and we will, will include all of that offsite information, and we will be able to compare everything that we do post-construction in the context of all of the water that's in that ditch. And if we don't do that in, when we have poorly drained soils and flat drainage sheds like we have here on the, the north end of the county, then you can end up with imbalances that actually, even though you may not be sending as much water into, or you may not be sending more water into the ditch after construction, you may be sending it in at the wrong time. And so by modeling the whole thing, we can evaluate all of that and do the design holistically. And so by modeling the whole thing, we can evaluate all of that and, and do the design holistically.
So it's, it doesn't drain well. How deep is the clay in that particular area, I mean, is it two feet down, foot down, three feet down, I mean, is it because of the clay soil underneath it? Or is it just because it's low as well?
I do not have the soils report for this, but the...
But you said it doesn't drain well already right now.
Correct, correct. It's a, that terminology really describes the types of soil that we have in the north end of the county. And that's why you see all of the wet ponds that you do in the north end of the county for stormwater management, and you don't see that over on the beach.
Is this particular different or worse than what you've normally seen on the northern end?
No.
Or is this typical throughout the county?
This is, like I said, the north end of the county, this is typical. These conditions are throughout the north end of the county.
And it's typically managed through stormwater ponds?
Yes, through wet ponds.
Well, some of the, some is going to drain into that existing outfall ditch, correct?
Correct, correct, we will, we evaluate in the, in that pre-construction modeling we do, which will include our site. We determine where the water is flowing and how much is flowing there. And our charge from the county through the ordinance is that in the post-construction condition, we honor those drainage divides and we don't send more water or water more quickly any of those directions when compared with the existing condition. And in the case of the ten-year storm, which is kind of a benchmark for the county, the county's required requirements are that we actually reduce the flow leaving our site to the two-year condition. So it's, we, we evaluate the site, existing site, and it's a two-year wooded condition. So we figure out how much water and where the water's running for the two-year storm pre-construction, and then our post-construction condition, we can't release the water in the ten-year storm any faster than it was going in the two-year storm before we built. So it's actually a flow reduction, it's actually one of the more aggressive, or the most aggressive flow reduction in this region ordinance, and that's, that's what the design will meet.
Exceeds the state standards.
Correct.
I didn't hear what you said.
And, and that exceeds the state standards, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
The county, the county standards exceed the state standards, is what you said.
Let, let me, let me clarify that. The state standards, for the most part, address water quality, treatment of pollutants in stormwater. They do have some flow balance requirements in their, in their rules. Flow balance is what we're really talking about, peak flow mitigation, and, which isn't the focus of the state rules. And, but like I said, they have language that does address it, and what Kirtuck County, the peak flow mitigation that Kirtuck County does exceeds anything in the state rules, and it, it also is much more, much more significant reduction than any of the surrounding counties and what's required in the other areas, in the other areas in the region.
And you already went over some of this, but what are the peak flow mitigation targets that you'll use for your final design? I know you talked about the two and ten, but where would the system be modeled?
I, I will read this so that it's in the record and matches what, what's in the binders. The stormwater systems will be designed to detain the difference between the two-year wooded, pre-wooded condition, pre-development runoff, and the ten-year developed condition, post-development runoff, as a minimum. The system will also be modeled and designed to manage the one-hundred-year storm event. While the lots all appear to be located within flood zone X, no flood hazard, there are flood hazard zones present on the property and UDO requirements relative to flood zones will be adhered to.
And can you please describe that design again? I think you, we already went through the, just for the record, the design of the...
Sorry, yes, I, I got off script, but again, for the record, let me, let me read this. Wet ponds will be used in this development to meet county requirements and mitigation targets. The ponds will be sized in accordance with Kirtuck County's stormwater ordinance requirements to mitigate peak flows associated with the proposed development. All ponds will discharge via control structures. Swales that will be constructed along the proposed roadways and along rear property lines will accept runoff from the lots and convey it to the proposed BMPs. A portion of the roads will have curb and gutter, the lots fronting on this part of the street will generally drain to collector swales in the rear, which will then collate, convey runoff to the BMPs.
And does this use present any concerns regarding the public health and safety with, with respect to stormwater?
In my professional opinion, the millstone crossing project will not endanger the public health or safety, nor will it injure the value of adjoining abutting lands from a stormwater management perspective. The proposed modeling and stormwater management targets will ensure that the properties in the area are not negatively impacted by the project's stormwater.
Thank you, Mr. Deal, I have no further questions for this witness and tender him to the board.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple. So in the site information, and I think this might have been from your affidavit, Mr. Deal?
Yes, sir.
It says the northern tract drains generally south to north from about seven feet mean sea level to about four feet towards the wetlands. And then you go on to say that the northern tract will drain to a BMP that is being proposed adjacent to the wetlands to the north of the development property. And then you say all the ponds will be discharged via control structures. So this is not so much a direct stormwater question, but more of a wetlands question, and I don't know if that's in your area of expertise as well. But the question I have, so, we know there's wetlands immediately adjacent to the north of the northern tract, right? So anytime we disturb or manipulate the landscape, you know, obviously it's gonna change the, the flows there. And it sounds like you have a, an adequate plan for capturing that runoff in the pond there. My question is actually related to that impact potentially on the adjacent wetland.
Through the wetlands.
Because if we, if we engineer the flow to go to this pond now, that's flow that's naturally going to the wetlands right now. So are there any issues, any concerns there with perhaps slowing the flow in some way to the wetland, thereby adversely impacting the wetland potentially?
Sure. Yes, this is something that we pay, pay attention to, and it is a stormwater question of protecting the wetlands, but also not starving the wetlands. In the existing condition, our water goes to the wetlands, it does go via ditches to, to the wetlands, so, so there is some concentration when it goes. And we will quantify, like I said, we will quantify what that flow rate is. This design is not going to change the volume of water, not in, in any significant way, the volume of water going to the wetlands, they're not going to be starved. We're gonna hold it back and we're gonna discharge it at a rate that's slower than the water's coming into the pond, but we're using that existing condition as our guide as to how rapidly to release the water. So we're mimicking in a lot of ways, we're actually, we're reducing in the ten-year storm, but as we move away from the ten-year storm, we're mimicking the, the existing condition. And one of the design elements, one of the nuts and bolts design engineering things that I'll do is when we design the control structures and that discharge, we have to design how that discharge releases, releases the water to the ground or into an existing ditch that goes into the wetland. And we can calculate the velocities, and we know for the types of soils, what rate, what, what velocity the soils can handle before they start eroding. So all of those things are things that we're responsible for, and they're things that the state in particular, in their review of the stormwater focuses on.
All right, and, and what would those controls, what would be an example of those controls, like passive control, like a, like a weir or something like that?
Yeah, it's, you can have, so if there's a, a good, well-established existing ditch, then we will probably make use of that ditch. And then you focus on the point where we go from a pipe to a ditch, because there's a place where you have a sudden difference in velocities, and there are different types of protection you can do on that. Typically, it's gonna be some kind of stones, some sort of flared conveyance that causes some turbulence for that outgoing water, it causes some slowdown in fan into, into then the existing natural conveyance. And you look for making sure those flows are happening at a rate that aren't gonna chew at that existing conveyance. If you don't have that existing ditch, if you just have a wetland fringe that's, that's just relatively leveled, then you actually have what they will refer to as level spreaders. You, you may have like a long, concrete, shallow channel that's a dead end, and it's flat all the way across, and it's got basically like a curb on, on one side, up so the water fills that and then just starts spreading from that into the surrounding grass and, and wetland. So those are typically what we would see used for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, continue on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deal. Next, I'd like to call Mr. Lyle Overcash. Mr. Overcash, please state your name and address for the board.
My name is Lyle Overcash, I work with Kim and Horn and Associates, 421 Fayetteville Street, Suite 600 in Raleigh, 27601.
And what is your background and experience?
I'm a senior project manager with Kim and Horn, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from NC State, got about thirty-two years' experience, similar to Andy. I'm a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina and Virginia, a member of Institute of Transportation Engineers, and I specialize in performing traffic studies for private developments, but also work on public developments, transportation and safety for municipalities and for NC DOT.
At this time, I'd like to tender Mr. Overcash as an expert in the field of transportation engineering and traffic impacts.
Without objection.
What is your role in this project?
I have evaluated the layout of the site plan and performed a traffic and safety analysis for the proposed development in order to testify regarding factor one, whether the use will endanger public health and safety from a traffic perspective. The analysis was completed in early November twenty-five and studied the forty-one single-family homes.
And is this analysis referenced in the binders at tab eight?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to admit that as exhibit one. Mr. Chair?
I don't have a tab eight.
You don't have a tab eight, it should be after Lyle Overcash's...
I have a tab seven. And then I got...
Yes, seven.
Here's seven.
It's seven.
Sorry, seven.
Okay.
Apologize.
It would be tab seven.
Yeah. Okay, and can we admit this into evidence as exhibit one, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Has the street network for the proposed development been designed to create a safe environment for vehicles and pedestrians?
Yes, the roadways and sidewalks have been laid out generally as shown on the master plan and will be in accordance with approved right-of-way, and pavement width characteristics using NC DOT Complete Streets Planning Manual as a guide. Based on safety review of Tolles Creek Road, site traffic is not expected to increase crash rates, site distance is appropriate at the site driveways.
And in your expert opinion, are traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by this project mitigated by existing infrastructure and will not endanger the public safety?
Yes, the proposed millstone crossing development is expected to generate less than fifty peak hour trips and less than five hundred daily trips, which is well below the NC DOT thresholds for a traffic impact analysis, which is about three thousand daily trips. I calculated the future traffic volumes on Tolles Creek Road by using a 2023 annual average daily traffic volumes published by NC DOT, applying a two-and-a-half percent annual growth rate and including traffic anticipated to be generated by Tolles Creek Elementary. The future traffic volumes on Tolles Creek in the vicinity of the project are approximately five thousand vehicles per day in 2027. This is well below the acceptable level service capacity of the roadway, which under NC DOT guidelines, this roadway is approximately twelve thousand vehicles per day. Also researched the crash data in the area, based on the crash data, analysis for the section of Tolles Creek Road from Pointers to Campus Drive, the calculated crash severity is below the DOT threshold, therefore, there are no safety concerns with the location of the proposed development. Site traffic is not expected to increase crash rates.
And will the proposed access points and new streets allow safe and efficient access for fire, rescue, and law enforcement?
Yes, appropriate access has been made for emergency service vehicles in accordance with applicable standards.
Thank you, I have no further questions for this witness, and I tender him to the board.
Yes.
I have another question. When you did your data research and your studies, did you take into effect that DOT will be widening that road and putting a turning lane in there, repaving it, and how is that gonna affect with the setbacks in the sidewalks? Has that been readjusted and calculated with the different traffic patterns that are gonna be coming through there?
That was, that was good information to hear they're gonna repave it, because it's, it's in really, it's in really poor shape right now, that portion, East of Guinea. Actually, you know, when we did the kind of estimate of the capacity of the roadway, we kind of put it at usually ten-to-eleven-foot lanes. Typically, when DOT comes back, they'll add, maybe they'll start cheating it out a little bit and start widening.
I think they're planning a widening of some, so is that gonna affect the sidewalks? And then you got to move the setbacks back into development more, is that gonna affect the setbacks that are already designed on it?
To lose sidewalks along the highway.
Correct, but then they gotta move the sidewalks in then, because they're gonna widen in Tolles Creek, then the sidewalks are gonna have to go into the, you follow them getting in?
Yeah.
And then the setbacks are gonna be reduced now based on the drawings?
Typically, when DOT does their widening, the, you know, again, they'll add six inches to a foot, try to get just a little bit of extra width, they're trying to get to twelve feet of lanes, which is, you know, the ideal lane width. So if they widen it even a little bit, then the capacity, which I estimated at twelve thousand, it'd actually go up a little bit, maybe thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand.
Capacity could increase.
Yes.
Okay.
Did you say that this is expected to generate five hundred trips a day, five hundred vehicle trips?
Single-family homes generate about nine to ten trips per unit, so we estimate about four hundred and forty-four daily trips for the whole development, both sides.
For the forty-one houses.
That's correct.
Is that using the Institute for Traffic Engineers manual?
Yes, using a typical manual for IT, IT trip generation manual.
Okay, other questions?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Overcash's affidavit is at tab six in your binders, at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Hunter Howell. Mr. Howell, can you please state your name and address for the board?
Yes, my name is Hunter Howell, office address is 412 East Cham Street, Cary, North Carolina, 27511.
And can you please explain your background and experience?
Yes, I'm a professional real estate appraiser employed by Paramount Commercial Appraisers. I'm licensed as a state-certified general appraiser in the state of North Carolina, and I'm a practicing affiliate of the Appraisal Institute, and I have been appraising properties in North Carolina for over ten years now. In addition, I have also testified as an expert at numerous quasi judicial hearings before this county, as well as other jurisdictions addressing the same or similar factors that I'll be addressing here tonight.
At this time, I would like to tender Mr. Howell as an expert in the field of real property appraisal, impacts to real property in harmony with surrounding properties.
Without objection.
Mr. Howell, can you please explain your role in this project?
Yes, I was engaged to study the impacts of the project, the value of adjoining property, and whether the project is in harmony with the area.
And can you please explain how you evaluated these factors?
Yes, similar to other testimonies I've offered this board, I've prepared a report, which I analyzed the effects of the proposed development and the surrounding areas.
And that report is located at tab nine of the binder?
Yes.
And at this time, we'll admit that into evidence as exhibit two. Mr. Chair? And how did you evaluate the impacts of this use on adjoining or abutting lands?
The report looked at the surrounding land uses and residential values over the previous three years to determine market demographics and trends. I also looked at other developments in comparable locations in order to determine the effects of these developments in the area whence they are located. This method is called a matched paired analysis. The report analyzed a one, three, and five-mile radius, but gave the most weight to statistics within a three-mile radius. I looked at the population, housing supply, renter versus owner occupied statistics, and household income data over the last ten years with projections of the next five years. This data is on page through the report. This data is on page through the report. The population in a three-mile radius is expected to grow by 2.16% over the next five years. The housing supply is also expected to increase at approximately the same rate. This indicates a strong and healthy market that needs new housing to accommodate population growth. We also analyzed the housing inventory and prices as well as average days on the market over the last three years. This analysis shows that over the past five years, in the Kerfett County market, home prices have been increasing while average days on the market have been declining. These trends indicate a strong residential market in the need of additional housing. As this area's population continues to grow, existing home prices will continue to rise. And as a result of increasing home values, available vacant land in the area will also increase as new developments are doing well and developers need to fill the void for additional housing options.
And did you analyze how the proposed development is anticipated to impact surrounding properties?
Yes, so there's generally a positive impact to surrounding properties with the type of development that's proposed. As these new residential developments come to areas, it enhances the surrounding areas positively in terms of property values. Increasing home values increase the value of available vacant land as developers look to fill this void for the additional housing options. This has been seen in several instances across the eastern part of the state. We looked at three large residential subdivisions with master plans in other formerly rural areas and found that they tended to increase adjacent land values. This is on page 11 of the report. The proposed development is bordered by single-family residential properties to the east and west and vacant land to the north and south. Typically, these developments are clustered beside each other along less traveled corridors to keep harmony of use. Larger commercial developments are typically located a short distance away along higher traffic corridors, limiting the number of vehicles passing the residential developed areas. Based on the proposed density of the development and these tendencies, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or budding lands.
And in your opinion, is the proposed development in harmony with the area in which it's located?
Yes, so we looked at similar developments in the media area to determine if this project is cohesive with the development pattern. This is on page six and seven of the report. We identified six similar subdivisions in the area, recently developed or approved and under construction. Based on the developments we identified, this project is cohesive and in harmony with the surrounding and uses. Based on the proposed density of the development, there are no negative impacts to the adjacent properties or the general neighborhood. Based on this analysis and report, I found that the proposed use will not injure the value of the adjoining or budding properties and will be in harmony with the area.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. I have no further questions for this witness. I tender him to the board.
Board, have questions?
Just. Go ahead first. I got one. So on page 11 of your report, you've got the analysis that you performed with the other developments?
Yes, sir.
How is a 310-acre development of 727 residences, a 3,000-acre development with I don't know how many houses, and a 1100-acre with 4,000 home development compared to this?
Yes, so we like, when we're doing a paired analysis, we like to make it as extreme as possible to see if there is negative impacts. If there are, then we can start scaling down to see when that happens. But when it's at that scale and we're seeing positive impacts, that's kind of a good indication.
But wouldn't that throw, like, you know, you've got to hear the flower plantation. It talks about, it sparked.
Yep.
Wait, maybe it wasn't that one. There was one in here where it talked about sparking interest for commercial development in the area, which, you know, would increase the home prices or the land prices of that area if it were going to go into commercial development. So wouldn't that skew the results off of that?
Well, it's kind of in the same genre there. So as you're increasing more homes in a specific area, that area becomes more induced to have commercial developments come to that area. So as you keep adding residential dwellings and units to an area, at some point, they're going to need more commercial to support that residential population. And so you gradually see the increase in land values as that continues to happen.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I guess I have a question. When you look and you do your appraisals, you look at something like this, and I see and you see it's going to be a potential growth, you see the growth coming. Do you take in consideration the need, the effect on existing or the lack of supporting infrastructure, or what's going to be required to handle this growth? Do you consider what, do you look at, okay, what type of services are available, or what's the impact going to be for the existing versus what we're going to need? And what the strain is going to put on a county with that growth? I mean, is that, do you look at any of that at all, or you just look at growth and need for houses?
So both. So we obviously rely on the experts in other Tennessee's, not just in these type of hearings, but when we're doing full appraisal reports for individual property owners or developers, they always inquire to hire transportation experts and infrastructure experts to say, hey, could this type of development actually occur here or can it not because there's not enough infrastructure? So of course, if an engineer or somebody says it cannot, then obviously we rely on their expert analysis and incorporate it into our appraisal analysis.
Would you say that you have more experience appraising residential or commercial properties?
So we do commercial, but residential subdivisions are classified as commercial properties, so we do quite a bit of residential subdivision developments.
Anyone else? Gary, none? Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'm going to briefly call Ms. Turner, talk about schools. I know you've already been sworn in, but can you please state your name and address again for the board?
Jenny Turner, 153 Ford House Road, Kuratac.
And what is your role for the county?
Assistant Planning Director.
Okay, and did you oversee the county staff's preparation for this hearing? Or did you remember the staff report that appears in the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, and as a part of that preparation for this case, did staff investigate the current capacity of Kuratac County Public Schools?
Yes.
Do you recognize this chart shown on the screen?
Yes.
And is this an excerpt from the staff report regarding school capacity?
It is.
And this chart, is this on page three of the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, so where are the students generated from this development anticipated to attend school?
Shawboro Elementary and Moyac Middle and the high schools.
And how many elementary students per dwelling unit does it assume?
Per the Tischler study, it's 10 students, 10 elementary students, three middle, and five high school.
And on page two of the staff report, it states Shawboro Elementary has available capacity to serve the additional 10 elementary students generated by the development, and Moyac Middle School has available capacity to serve the four additional students generated by this development, and high schools in the county have available capacity to serve the seven additional students generated by this development.
Five, I think.
Oh, sorry, five, excuse me.
Yeah.
Did staff base that statement on the chart below or on the screen?
Yes.
And that chart is titled Adequate Public Facilities Schools, correct?
Correct.
And just really quickly, so when you were researching this, according to the chart, what is the percentage of actual capacity of Kuratac High for the current school year?
88%. Oh, actual, yeah, 88%.
Then when you did that research, do you recall how many seats are currently available?
At the high school?
Yes.
I do not have that particular information, but I have it.
Do you have the chart that I sent you?
Yes.
Does this email refresh your recollection?
Yes, thank you. So Kuratac High School has 145 seats available.
And how many seats are available at the middle school?
167.
And how many are available at?
Shawboro.
Shawboro.
47.
Great. And does this take into account the additional capacity that's going to be created at Tolles Creek Elementary when that opens?
No.
But as the staff report states, there is sufficient capacity based on today's numbers.
Yes.
And those are all the questions that I have for this witness. Any questions for Jenny Turner?
Questions for Ms. Turner?
I have a question. Could you go back to that chart that showed actual and committed? So when we look at the numbers, committed capacity, and we're talking about this subdivision, do you know if the committed is like in the works right now? Do you anticipate those numbers becoming the real thing prior to this subdivision?
Right, so the committed capacity is updated through the end of last year, through the end of 2024, and we update that usually once a year. So some of those subdivisions could be some that have approval, that are not yet into construction drawing phase or final plat phase. Some could be getting ready to be in either of those phases.
Thank you.
Ms. Turner, how would, when Tolles Creek Elementary opens, that would, the students generated from this subdivision would attend Tolles Creek Elementary, correct?
I do not think I have a copy of the district for that.
I'm pretty sure in the district map, they were part of Tolles Creek.
I mean, they're, how far is that? It can't be more than a few miles.
A mile, a mile and a half, three quarters probably.
Yeah, she has it here.
Yes.
So, okay, I mean, I was going to ask how that would impact the numbers at Tolles Creek Elementary, you know, projected what we're looking at.
Well, you would look at the elementary school capacity for that grouping of schools, and Tolles Creek would add there, is my understanding.
Okay.
And are you aware of how many additional seats Tolles Creek will have?
And what's the capacity?
About 800 for Tolles Creek.
What's the capacity of?
About 700, I believe.
Yeah, that list, that email.
680 or something.
Moyac Elementary has a capacity of 770 students. Shawboro, 622, Central, 282, for a total of 1,674, not including the Tolles Creek capacity.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Turner.
At this time, I'll ask that the presentation, staff report, agenda, all attachments, the affidavit summarizing the witness testimony, and the video and audio recordings of this meeting be admitted into the record. And we can remain available for questions, and we do reserve the right to cross-examine witnesses. And we also want to raise a standing objection to standing for others who wish to participate in this process. As your county attorney well knows, North Carolina law has a high bar for standing and proving special damages. However, you know, and that pertains to people who have the right to present evidence, participate and present evidence at this hearing. And again, we ask that we be given an opportunity to summarize the evidence at the close of evidence before the hearing is closed. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to call for a short recess. At this time, I'm going to call the meeting back to order.
I was just going to answer those questions.
Yes, we're going to have Ms. Turner answer the questions that were asked earlier.
I just want to provide an answer regarding the significant natural heritage areas. The map that shows up on GIS that I showed you that has the hatched map with the straight line across does appear that some of the lots and some of the road might be within that area. But looking at the state's websites, there's a couple different pages where it appears to be updated, where that significant natural heritage area just includes the wooded portion of the property. It appears to follow that almost exactly. In that case, no, the project would not be within that area.
The houses, but the plat would. A portion of the plat, none of the plat.
Mm-mm.
Thank you.
What was the one with the hatched area? Where did that come from?
That's the RGIS.
That's RGIS.
Yes.
So then we need to update that, is what you're saying, probably?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to open the public comment period, and we are going to be monitoring the three-minute warning. And I'm going to ask the attorney to let us know what germane information is and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in order for you to be able to hear this evidence, it has to be material substantial and competent, meaning that individuals can testify, but they can only testify to what they have personal knowledge of. They cannot testify as to their opinion unless they've been tendered as an expert witness. So they can only testify to facts and something that they have personal knowledge of, and that is it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so basically, like, what she said, so if I lived beside the property and I saw this five years ago, they could state something like that?
Yes.
Okay.
But no hearsay, and that means any out-of-court statement, anything that's not said in here, that cannot be considered. So no hearsay and just limited to facts, personal knowledge. And if I hear something that you probably shouldn't consider, I will say something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First on the list, we have Mr. James Mims. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
James Mims, 105 Chestnut in Moyac. I just wanted to use the own chart that the applicants used for the school capacities and just make sure that the board was aware of the second tenured lettering on there. It says, "Does not include minor subdivisions, exempt subdivisions, and subdivisions approved prior to the adoption of the adequate public facilities ordinance." I want to know, does this include Apartments, Flora, and Lotus Ridge, those capacity numbers? I just want to make sure that those are included.
It does, and committed capacity.
So take a moment to think back to any time that we've had a southerly wind for just a few days, a few days straight, and you look and stroll down the north end of Tolles Creek Road. You and I know that from Tolles Bay Colony Bridge to the north of Tolles Bay Colony Bridge is a very common heavily flooded area. Even they testify to that. This includes being a reason that may contribute to school closures. Are we going to sit here and listen to an engineer tell us that this will be solved by the development? We have enough common sense and personal knowledge, as all of you do, to know that when you correct flooding and watershed on one property, in this case over 40, that the water has to go somewhere, and that common sense says that it will go to the surrounding families' properties. I have one important question. Please define what is meant by "in harmony with surrounding area." How is subdivisions in harmony with homes on individual lots greater in size than any lot on this proposal? How is a subdivision in harmony with surrounding farmland? Increased home prices, increased home values increases my family's property taxes. It does indeed injure adjacent families through those property taxes. I don't need paid experts to mislead us and tell us that this development would not hinder our capacities. We have our own experts that tell us that our fire departments and many of you are asking for personnel. Our own experts state that we need apparatus, that we are dealing with a delayed school that many of you said would not happen. We have ongoing sewer issues, and we're seeing staffing issues across every field position in this county. Those are facts. Board, you cannot simply address density and expect a developer to move along or then, or even expect the community to think you care about preserving rural character. We have got to have a one-acre minimum lot size for new developments in this county. These tiny lots are not in preservation of rural character, not in harmony with adjacent property, and not what the community wants. How can you say in the same sentence that this preserves natural environment but changes the entire use of the land from ag to residential? This is simple. This is a rezoning. This is not what we want. Please vote no.
Thank you. Next, Garland Stone.
My name is Garland Stone, and I like to.
Give your address, please, for the record.
1090 Tolles Creek Road, Moyac. And I like. And I like to speak about the water problem we have. We have flooding there often, and nowhere for the water to drain. We got ditches stocked up. Some of that property that they got on the north side, it drains to the north, but the ditch is stocked up, so they can't drain it. And on the backside, it drains to the swamp. So, I'd like to just tell everybody that I do have sand on mine. I couldn't build on my property, and they wouldn't let me build. And I got seven acres and some lot, and I do have sand two foot down, and they wouldn't let me build. So, understated that. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Next, Charles, y'all gonna have to forgive me. Okay. Just give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Charles Capuano. My wife and I, Kathy, we live at 224 Rocky Top Road. On the southern plat, where the 31 homes are being built, 13 of those homes run all along our property. And I guess I look at four issues here, and that is privacy, property value, flooding, and safety. The privacy, I mean, we moved here 22 years ago, and we bought this place because of the size of the property and the privacy that we had, had, have right now, and we're not gonna have later. And that's our personal issue. No matter what we do with a berm or whatever, we're still gonna have 13 houses run along our property line. As far as property value, I don't have facts, but common sense tells me with 13 homes or 31 homes in my backyard, my property value is gonna be impacted negatively, not positively. As far as flooding goes, like I said, 22 years, and every time we get a gully wash, and I don't mean, you know, four or five inches or nor'easter or hurricane, I mean just a couple inches, that ditch is not being maintained on the other side, in the 31 property side. Every year, I hire somebody to come and cut the ditch to keep it clean, and no matter what, it overflows from that property. Having that watershed there, it's right next to my property. I have a pond also, which flows into the ditch with an overflow. And to me, that's a big issue. It floods onto my property every time we get heavy rains. So, what is it gonna happen with 31 houses draining into that? And then it's, the other issue with that is the fact that Old Tulsa Creek floods all the time. We get two, three inches of rain, those poor people that live along there, their front yards, some people can't even get down their driveways. So, it's an issue. And I know these experts have come here and said, "It shouldn't be a problem." Well, I beg to differ. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Your wife was signed up, does she wish to speak? Or both of you were signed up?
I didn't, but...
She did sign.
Okay, okay. Richard Evans?
Well, let me say this.
Your name and address first.
Richard Evans, 1182 Tulsa Creek Road.
Thank you.
Been there for 82 years. I've been there for 82 years. My daddy was there for 89 years, and his father before him. So, I think I know a little bit about that place. First of all, I think the developers are getting ahead of theirself on this county. We need to do a lot of things to get everything so it's ready for something like that if they want to do it. Let's see, what else I got here? The highway department is gonna have to get the water off of Tulsa Creek Road, and like he said, it, it flows right down Old Tulsa Creek Road, and I've seen a foot or so right on top of the road itself, all the way down it, and it comes right on towards my house. And, and the poor people down there, down the street has got nothing but big ponds and stuff. So, I, I, I know what they're talking about. They need to teak, well, I see that, let's see. The people, the people of, we need to protect Currytuck Sound. This, this place was originated from Tulsa, Tulsa Creek Sound, Tulsa Creek and Currytuck Sound, okay? We have flesh-eating bacteria right now, that three people I know have died from it. I mean, one, and then I got two people right here that's had it. This fella right here has had it, lost his toe. This fella here had to stay in the hospital for over two weeks in emergency room to get rid of it.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to interrupt, but I don't see how this is relevant to the matter before you this evening.
Well, we, all, all we gotta do is get these houses from running off, running off into the sound, running off into the sound, because the sound is, is, is going away from us. And I've been on the sound since I was six years old, and I'm 70, 82 now. So, I know what I'm talking about. I, I fish, I fish some, and, and there wasn't many fish last year, and if, I'm gonna fish a little bit this year, and if it goes away, then we lost it.
Mr. Evans, get to your next point now, we're, the clock's running.
Okay, okay. Let's see. I got that. What we need to do to help this sound is put some saltwater in. We need to do that. And that can be done.
All right, Mr. Evans, your time is up. Make your last point.
Okay, okay, I think that's about it. I think it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Rachel Brown?
Hello, and thank you. My name is Rachel Brown, and my lot is 171 Stone Street, so I'm directly connected to the upcoming housing development. I seriously have no issues with the housing development that is coming. Actually, 99% of my questions were answered by Mr. Dill. The one concern I did have was the plat that was shown by the, the company that's trying to put the house in, houses in, that, what was shown was different from what I have access to via the county. So, I wa, I was wondering if I could access to that, and in addition to that, the berm drawings that are actually on the plat, the conceptual plat, and the information that was given to us today in regards to what was going on was completely different from the conception, conceptual plat that we had, that was shown up here. So, I guess maybe can we have access to that, so we can like look at it for ourselves? And in addition to that, the reading that was on the berm plat, the conceptual berm plat, the conceptual drawing of the plat for the berms said that in, underneath part of the drawings was "berms," quote unquote, "as needed." And it seems to me that it's kind of unclear on the conceptual plat, that I cannot see the backside of the property to see where that berm's gonna go. So, I, 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 again, 99% of my concern was answered by Mr. Dill, but again, I don't have access to the plat that he, that was up there for a very short amount of time, and unfortunately, I didn't get a picture of it. But I would like to know so that if I can go back and maybe ask him questions?
We'll, we'll, we'll get those questions answered for you, but Ms. Turner, is the plat that submitted tonight substantially different than what was on the website? Or is there, I don't understand?
You mean with the application?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, it is different. There's like dog parks and some other things on there, which would have raised other questions, perhaps, maybe?
It's possible, is it different than the community meeting?
Yes, it is very different.
Referencing the community meeting, which may have had...
Well, the, the community, not the community meeting, it's actually on the, the county website, when you pull up the Millstone Creek...
Oh, the TRC?
Uh, not the TRC. It is actually, uh, give me a minute, I'm sorry.
The, these are the plans that were in the agenda packet.
The Millstone Crossing.
But you'll be able to get...
A 41 lot conservation subdivision, Moyac Township, Currytuck County, North Carolina, and it shows the plots, but on these plans, it does not show the backside that I could see. I see the backside here, but the berm that was being shown up here was a little bit more detailed. And then the backside of the property, I believe near one of the retaining ponds, so the backside of the property showed some sort of recreational area, which is not on this plat, and some other things. So, that, so it's not that it might not make any difference in the long run, but I'm just curious as to why it was different. Because it doesn't give me the full picture of what's going on.
They responded back to TRC comments, our technical review committee comments, so this may have been the original submittal, is that, can you go back and see where that's from?
It is.
Back, back out.
Typically, what happens is they will submit a plat, and then when they go to the technical review, technical review will recommend some updates and changes, and then that's the one that's presented tonight.
Oh, okay.
And that's in the agenda packet.
Okay. All right, I guess that's all my questions or concerns or whatever, but, um, yeah, I wish I would've known a lot of this before.
When they come back, we'll talk about the berms.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am, you can also pull this whole, I know you probably already know that, but you can pull the whole agenda packet too off the county website.
I did try that, but the, the county website is not working properly. I tried it three, uh, since last Thursday, it goes on and then it freezes.
Yeah, you can go to the, the government page and hit the minutes and agenda and click on like the, I mean, you can get it.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much.
We'll, we'll get with the berms here in a few minutes.
All right, great.
Uh, next, we have Kimberly Akad, Akid? Akad?
Actually, a lot of my questions were answered.
Okay, thank you. We have Archie Sori. And Joyce Sori, Archie Sori and Joyce Sori. Well, somebody was...
Somebody put your name down.
Somebody was looking after you tonight. Okay, and David Deal? Oh, you were, okay. Ashley Terraza, Terraza? Oh, that's you again. Okay. Hunter Howell, okay. Lyle Overcash, okay. And then...
Paul O'Neill?
Jay, is it Jay Stoll?
Could be James Stout, possibly?
That's him.
My name's James Stout, 105 Selfish Street, Tulsa Bay Colony. I, uh, up here on Pete's behalf there, I'm one of those guys that got the Fibria out there. Our bay is full of bacteria. And what I am concerned about, and what he was actually concerned about, and he didn't get it out, is the runoff from these new houses that are there, and the septic tanks possibly seeping into the sound and destroying the quality of that water. That's the biggest thing that's going on. Now, I can sit here and tell you about how much I suffered while I was in hospital from a little teeny scratch from my crab. I clean my crabs when they're alive before I cook them. And, uh, scratch me. Hosed it out real good, put bastards trading on it, put a Band-Aid on it, forgot it. The next morning, my arm was like this. And my, my doctor sent me directly to the emergency room. She called and told them I was coming. They segregated me immediately from everybody else, and then everybody was coming in in hazmat suits. My infectious disease doctor told me not to get in that water ever again with an open cut. Said, "Y'all really need to start thinking about our bay and what all these houses might possibly be doing." Might not be what you've been thinking, but it is something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's all that I had signed up tonight. I'm gonna ask Mr. Bissell if he could address the question about the berms. I know that you're gonna come and, and give your rebuttal. If you want to do it as part of that, that'd be fine.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to summarize the evidence, but if y'all have questions for Mark?
Yeah, the, the lady had questions about the berm, something about saying "as needed", and then being different than what she saw on the drawing. Could you address that, please?
Right, so I think there are two different berms that are being discussed. You know, one is, is fixed, and it's shown right here on the plan, and that is a berm that's been offered as part of the approval.
Four foot.
Four foot tall with campus grass planted on the top.
That's on the other side.
Is part of the stormwater analysis, I think that what you may be referring to is there is a statement about a berm being needed as, as needed. So, often when we do the stormwater analysis, we discover that in order to properly hold back a sufficient amount of water, we need to create a perimeter berm around the site. Usually, it's only, you know, maybe a half a foot or a foot high, but in order to, to make the stormwater system work, there's, there's a berm as needed. I think that may be the language that was picked up from the grant.
Okay. Ma'am, does that address your question?
It was kind of hard to hear him, to be quite frank. However, I was kind of wondering if the, Mr. Dill could answer, because he had, he was much better at answering it.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna speak, you have to come to the microphone. Even though we can't hear you, but you still have to come to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Wrong berm too.
I'm sorry. I said it was, I'm sorry, do I need to restate who I am?
No, just your question specific.
I said it was very difficult to hear, Mr. Bissell, and I, quite frankly, I like the, I feel that Mr. Dill is very adequate at explaining it, and much more technical. You know, I have a science background, college degree, so it resonates with me, and I think maybe that's why 99% of my questions were answered.
Well, tell them what your question is, and see if you can answer.
My question is, for the berms that are going up, on the original plat that we saw and that my family was looking at, it said that "berms," quote unquote, "as needed." Whenever I'm looking at this drawing that's up here for this proposed conceptual drawing land plat, I see three sides that have berms, but I hear Mr. Bissell say there's gonna be two. But is there, or is there not gonna be berms? Because if it's proposed, and I got a little bit of what Mr. Bissell was saying, is it depends on like the water runoff, and I guess how the, how the engineering can, figures out like the amount of water that's coming, you know, off or onto the land. But my question is, is there gonna be a berm? Because that was one of my biggest concerns for driving four and a half hours here from Northern Virginia to get an answer as to whether or not it is going to affect my property in the long run, just because we have agricultural land, and I don't want runoff, you know, or water being trapped in our land.
We're gonna...
That's pretty much it.
Well, you drove four and a half hours, and we're gonna get you that answer.
Well, that'd be great, thank you.
So, Mr. Deal?
Okay, Mark and I may have to tag-team a little bit on this. There are potentially berms with two different purposes on this, on the ultimate design here. And what, what Mark was pointing out on the graphic here were, and what we can definitively say these will be here, are the berms that are there as buffering and landscaping features. The detail that, that you saw on the plan, we believe that the, the detail that you're referencing, where we say "berms as needed," is the berming that I may need in order to make sure that our water stays on our site and is conveyed to the ponds. And sometimes that ends up being more than we anticipated in terms of, we'll have a little bit of area over here that we're not even working in, but we can't let that water run free and still meet our, our mitigation requirements, and so we'll bring that water over into the ponds. And we won't know that until we do the nitty-gritty design. And we won't know that until we do the nitty gritty design. And so that's why the berms as needed language is in there.
To your question, yeah.
Thank you. All right.
I had one question too, for, and it was regarding, I don't, and I can't remember his name, but I believe he lived off of Rocky Top. Is there a berm for the individual that, I guess he said he owned the, for twenty-plus years, he owned the home there? Is there a berm, I'm looking at the plat, is there a berm behind, behind his property?
Yes, uh, that is.
This right here?
This property line right here, and we have a berm proposed along that entire property line.
How high?
Four feet high.
Four feet.
With vegetation on top.
Yeah, come, you have to come to the microphone, sir.
And there's, how, is thirteen, is it thirteen that back at one, two, yeah, thirteen it looks like?
Question is, with the berm there, there was originally a fifty-foot buff all along the ditch line. And putting a twenty-five foot, four-foot-high berm, are they allowing enough room for maintenance of the ditch? Because that's one of the big problems with my property flooding, because it, no maintenance on the ditch.
Wait, that was my second part of the question, was I was gonna ask about the ditch. Who would be responsible for maintaining the ditch that separates you and them?
I, I take care of my side.
You take care of your side, that's what I was.
Okay, Mark.
Mark?
Yes, so, yeah, we'll leave room, uh, between the top of the dirt and the berm to be able to maintain our side as well.
Twenty-five feet?
How much room?
Thirty feet?
There's been some discussion that it depends on what you kind of, you gotta be, it could be fifty feet or minimum twenty-five feet. Do you have a, do you have a depth range that you're gonna? It doesn't show it on here. You said you'll allow it, what are you, are you gonna do a minimum twenty-five feet? To get, to get equipment or dump truck in there or excavator or something?
They're gonna just need something to cut it, probably.
Yeah, well, they gotta get a tractor in there, it's gotta be wide enough to. And is that gonna affect then, is that gonna, with that buffer? Or would that easement affect the boundaries of the setbacks of the property line at that point? Because that was a discussion we had with some of the farmers, that they needed bigger, more, more, footage for bigger equipment, and then if, and if he does that setback for the equipment, is that gonna start repeating on the setbacks from the property line now? Is that gonna affect this whole drawing? Yeah, well, I mean, but if, yeah, because if he's, if there's a certain setback from the back of property and, and now we're allowing another, we had the buffer there.
The question is, how much setback is there gonna be to allow for cleaning the ditches?
How much setback?
Because we have to have equipment. They didn't, they didn't calculate it.
For state stormwater designs, which this ditch is not part of, but it's, it's something that's, that's useful as a reference here for stormwater ponds and infiltration basins and, and infiltration swales and that sort of thing. The state requires ten to twelve feet, um, not twenty-five to fifty. That's typically for a large conveyance, and this is not a canal, this is, this is.
That was where we were talking about Guinea Mill Ditch. We were talking about, that was Guinea Mill Ditch, where we were talking about cleaning that out where, because it's.
But I thought we had something with the ordinance if, for new developments that we were gonna allow a certain amount of setback to.
That was with Guinea Mill Ditch, if tomorrow.
I think that's for certain named canals.
Yeah, it was for the bigger, it was for the biggers.
Yeah, just certain canals we were referring to?
Major drainage.
Major drainage. And Guinea Mill fell under that.
Okay.
Yeah, especially Guinea Mill and Rowland were reduced from fifty to twenty-five.
But you're gonna, then, then you're gonna go with the state standard, which is ten to twelve feet.
Well, we're gonna have to address it during final design. We, we wanna have a room for a ditch on both sides of, of the berm. We want to not, you know, mess with the drainage on the property line ditch, but allow room to maintain it. But we also need to collect water from the lots, which we'll do on the back of the lot, between the lot and the berm on, on the other side and convey that to the.
Yeah. Yeah, make sure we can get in there, because that's the problem we've had all the time, and you've heard them up here, is the ditch cleanouts and.
Yeah, but generally that second ditch is partially on the lot.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, please proceed. Thank you, uh, Mr. Bissell. And Mr. Deal.
So, um, at this time, I'm gonna summarize the evidence and the record this evening. Um, tonight, uh, the applicant has provided competent material and substantial evidence on each of these four required findings. And I'm gonna go over that right now. Um, so as to factor one, uh, the use permit will not endanger the public health or safety. Mr. Bissell offered expert testimony that the proposed uses meet the applicable UDO provisions and that the design will not endanger the public health or safety. Mr. Deal offered expert testimony as to the stormwater management plan and which is being designed to appropriately mitigate impacts, uh, this development will have on drainage. Mr. Overcash testified that access and the internal street and sidewalk network have been designed to mitigate any traffic congestion reasonably expected from this development and to facilitate the safe and efficient movement of emergency services and law enforcement. Anything else is not competent evidence, um, under state law, as it is speculation by lay witnesses where, um, an assessment and design requires technical and specialized knowledge. That's in the, um, North Carolina General Statute, section, uh, fourteen oh two. As to factor two, that it will not event, uh, injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. Mr. Howell offered expert testimony that the proposed uses and plans are expected to benefit, um, the adjoining property in terms of property values and will not adversely affect its value, and that the proposed residential uses are in harmony with the surrounding area and pattern of development. As to factor three, um, that it be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. Uh, Mr. Bissell cited the portions of the zoning ordinance where this board, um, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Bissell went over the, um, land use plan, uh, sections that are applicable to this project, as did Ms., uh, Ms. Turner. Uh, we also went over the heritage, uh, portion, uh, and, and looked, checked on the state's website. The development is concentrated at the, uh, on the farmland portion, uh, near the road, not where the, the trees, um, are located. And he testified, uh, that it is in conformance with the Imagine Currituck Land Use Plan in terms of density and those policies, um, as we are under the proposed, or the, uh, suggested density in the land use plan. Uh, as to factor four, that it will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public schools. Ms. Turner testified that her research and staff report, um, confirmed that the elementary, middle and high schools handling these eighteen students have adequate capacity per UDO section two point four point six and six point six. Therefore, these five witnesses have offered expert testimony on each of these four factors required in UDO section two point four point six. And North Carolina law states that if each is proven with competent material and substantial evidence, the applicant has made its prima facie case, and absent contradicting evidence that rises to the same level of expert qualifications, the board must grant this, uh, special use permit. And because we've met our burden here, this special use, uh, permit must be granted. Again, we've met each of the four requirements with the required evidence, and this special use permit, um, must be issued here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anybody have any further questions?
Well, the only comment I will make is I'm, yeah, I just, I know I've heard evidence up here, but, but the, uh, the health and the runoff and the drainage and the septic, so it's just, still bothers me.
Mr. Chairman, so, I don't remember who said it, and it might have been Mr. Mims. This property is already zoned for what they're asking for, correct? Because I think he said, and it might not have been him, if it wasn't him, I'm not trying to. But somebody said something about vote to not rezone it. I mean, it's already zoned.
It's already meets the zoning requirements.
Yeah, it's already zoned, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Mims meant in a practical sense.
Oh, I got you.
It's gone from a farm to.
Well, the north, the north is, um, single family.
And the other is ag.
Yeah, the southern part's ag.
Yeah, they're not asking for rezoning that.
What is it, seventy?
Yeah.
Seventy-eight acres of open space compared to, of the hundred and eleven? Wait a minute.
I do have, I do have concerns about the heritage area and how it will affect that. I'm thinking of the wildlife. And I have concerns about the runoff to the sound. And the, I do know, because I travel that road just every day, about the flooding, the drainage when we get even a small rain.
All right, Ms. Turner, I believe.
I'll add as well, I agree with, uh, Ms. Rose, um, that, um, I know we looked at the maps and they're kind of conflicting the county map. If, if you look at the county map, the, uh, significant natural heritage area actually goes right through, um, all of the, uh, platted lots on that north plot. Um, because all of those lots are on the north end of the, uh, of the plat there, um, away from the road. Uh, so they're actually closer to the natural heritage area. Um, and I, and I wanna read something here real quick from, uh, the land use plan. Um, and it refers to, um, uh, appendix B in the, uh, land use plan, uh, map B one. And it says, uh, the fragile areas map shows general locations as areas classified as significant natural heritage area, areas by the North Carolina Natural, Natural Heritage Program. The program inventories, catalogs and facilitates protection of the rarest and the most outstanding elements of the natural diversity of our state. These elements of natural diversity include those plants and animals that are so rare or the natural communities that are so significant that they merit special attention as land use decisions are made. Um, and it does go on to say that the Natural Heritage Program is not a regulatory program. So I don't wanna give the impression that there's a regulatory aspect here. But our land use plan says that we have to give these areas, um, a special consideration for land use decisions that, that impact these areas. So, you know, regardless of whether the, the lots on that northern plat are, um, actually in the natural heritage area or immediately adjacent, um, there, there may be some impacts there that I think, you know, we should consider and, and be, uh, especially considerate of.
Ms. Turner, can I ask Ms. Turner a question?
Well, Ms. Jarvis has been trying to ask Ms. Turner a question.
Go ahead, I'll follow Ms. Jarvis.
Ms. Turner, there, there's no requirement, or is there a requirement in the UDO uh, for new subdivisions to screen themselves from, uh, an adjacent subdivision? I'm looking at the tree scape, um, renderings on page twenty of the agenda packet. And there's the, obviously the buffer along Tolles Creek. Uh, you see the shrubs there, the, the, uh, tree scapes along the roads. But if you're looking at the properties, uh, and I'm on the, the north, um, side of Tolles Creek, other than a berm and, uh, ditch, is there, there's no requirements for screening between these?
No, those requirements generally are when zoning districts are different. So when you're transitioning zoning districts, there may be a perimeter landscape buffer requirement, but not when it's the same zoning district.
So if the south side is, uh, zoned agriculture and the adjacent properties are agriculture, there's no requirement to, and same thing for the north side, if they're both single-family mainland?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCord.
Uh, we, me and, sorry, me and Mr. Brethwaite were looking at the state map and the county map, the both of those maps. But I mean, per the state map, what you showed us, I mean, his, is the property in the natural heritage areas? That's what we were discussing, kind of on a sidebar.
It, it doesn't appear to me that, that it is, that follows the wetlands, um, I mean, the woodlands rather.
But the drainage goes into that heritage area.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what the concern was, I think, yeah.
Well, so I mean, but like, so whose map, I guess, would be the, is the state's more up to date probably than the county's or?
It appears so.
Okay, I was, I was just curious.
When you go to court, they're gonna use state map, state map. Doesn't matter which one you do, the drainage goes that way, so, okay.
Well, that is concerning if we don't have up-to-date maps.
Yeah, I, that's, that was my main reason why I asked that question, was if our maps.
Well, the, I think the map that, that Commissioner Braithwaite's been, uh, referencing initially was the one in the land use plan, right? And then on our GIS map, I don't believe that's, that's a layer that's available for public, right? I believe it's just on the plan side, so it's an internal map that we use internally. So, most likely the map's been changed in the interim. If the board wanted, we could try to, you know, make sure that that is the, the correct map of the state.
A good idea.
We close the evidentiary portion.
We're done with the, I can't take any more questions.
Oh, we did, didn't we?
So.
No.
Or did we?
Did he close, I don't know if he did.
I don't think, I don't think so.
I don't think, yeah, we were asking questions.
No, I don't think that.
Questions. Now we're done with the evidentiary portion, and we need a motion from the board.
Were they still asking something? She, the attorney stood up, I didn't know. Has she done her?
Okay, do, do, okay, do you need to open up the, reopen the evidentiary then?
I've closed the evidentiary portion.
Yeah, no, I know, I was just saying, if, if the concern is buffering on the perimeter on the northern side, to your point, Commissioner Jarvis, we could, we could accommodate that and would also speak to the special considerations up there on the north.
It's not just the north side, the gentleman that spoke from the south side that's gonna be looking at the thirteen houses.
There's a, that, that was a question, he has a buffer coming on that. Berm and a buffer.
A four, a four-foot berm.
But with vegetation on top of the four foot, so I mean, if it was a three-foot pompous bush, he's got seven feet, or, I mean, pompous bush. I believe, was that the pompous bush?
It's just not, the render, it's not on the rendering, but I, I know that was agreed to, but.
As Jenny just stated, there, there's no buffer, perimeter buffer required on the north side, because it's the same zoning district to the same zoning district. We didn't include that on the plan, it's not required. However, if the board were to see fit to impose that as a condition, we could, we could accommodate that.
Thank you.
I'm confused.
Okay, the evidentiary portion is closed, it's time for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
One more question before, or are we done asking questions then?
It's your prerogative, mister.
Thank you. Uh, so, I just wanna make sure for, if anybody makes a motion or whatever, so far is the gentleman from Rocky Top Road who asked about the buffer, that is in there with the berm, I'm, I'm just looking at the. Can we go back? Never mind, I can go to it on my thing, hold on.
On twenty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it was page twenty.
Right here, twenty-one. Twenty is the north side, twenty-one is the south side.
Twenty is the north side?
Twenty-one is the south side, that's for Rocky Top Road.
Yeah. It's smaller. I just wanted to clarify on a couple berms, that's all I was. It's thirteen that has a berm. And the other ten that she was talking about on the north side? That they said they would, couldn't. Isn't that what she said?
She said it would buffer the north side.
She said that would do a veget, or some sort of buffering, a visual barrier around the existing property.
On the north side.
They were willing to do that to accommodate, and then the vegetated buffer is included.
On the.
On the south side to shield Rocky Top Lane or.
Rocky Top, yeah, road.
I don't like saying that.
What about the west, the west side?
The west side's all farmland.
So, okay, yeah, there's, uh.
That's buffered.
West side already, by ordinance requires it.
On the south.
It's true.
It's a farm buffer.
Yeah, it's a farm buffer.
Yeah. All right, so what is your?
That answered my questions.
You're good.
Yeah, I was just making sure if, if there was buffers on those, if that, like I said, if, if somebody makes a motion or whatever or not.
All right, we're back to where we were a few minutes ago for the board to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'll make a motion then. Uh, I'm gonna move to deny twenty-five eighteen Millstone Crossing preliminary plots, especially because the applicant has not demonstrated proposed use meets the review standards of the UDO. of the UDO based on the applicant did not provide sufficient evidence to meet the burden of proof proposed would endanger the public health or safety to include also the endangerment of the, what was that land again, Commissioner Breathwaite?
Significant natural heritage?
Yes, the heritage, the heritage portion of the property.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? And, Mr. Paiment, could you tell me again specifically what they didn't meet?
I'm not satisfied, there was enough evidence provided with the drainage and the safety of the runoff with concerns to a budding property and the runoff that may go into the harm, the, I keep forgetting.
Heritage.
That heritage, yeah, area, to affect the wildlife and the, that preserve.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, yep.
Just to throw it out there, if that saves farmland, any pesticide, herbicide, chemical spray, this, that, the other, it's still running off into that natural heritage.
Correct, but this is for specific, if any new developments, we have to take a special consideration for any new developments, is what the state's correct.
Well, I'm just stating, if the concern is the significant heritage.
Well, and not only that, but also with the drainage in that area right now, too.
The drainage in there, I can understand, but since we're calling out the significant heritage thing, the, you know, farming chemicals, pesticides, herbicides, this, that, the other, is also running off into that area.
I understand that.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Nay.
The ayes have it.
Who, 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 who said yes?
Commissioner Breathwaite, how did you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner McCord?
Nay.
Commissioner Angel?
Nay.
Commissioner O'Neill, nay. Commissioner?
Yay.
Yay?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, four to three. All right, we're going to keep moving on. New business, consideration of ordinance creating the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. It may have.
Nope, it's back up. My, I lost the agenda packet for a minute. Get my wits about me.
Just wait a second for a vote to get out. Good night.
Do we not have a Parks and Rec Advisory Board?
I'm sure this will end. I'm sure.
Yep, and we're going to lose it. Big time. Mine, not mine either.
Well, you know, like I told everybody, it's everybody's individual opinion if the burden of proof was met. It's not as a group. Not enough to my satisfaction. It's okay. You know? Troy brought up a good, good issue.
He did.
But at the same time.
Something I wasn't aware of.
Totally irrelevant to what we'd considered.
She said it could be considered.
Yes, she said it did, she said it could be considered.
Yeah, Jenny said it could be.
Yeah, it can be considered, but you didn't do anything to mitigate it, you just said no. Consideration means mitigation.
Well, it would affect the heritage, the harmony of the area. Look at Faust, look at Faust and Flora. Used to be a field, used to be a field of snow geese. What happened?
You know, that's why, that's why there's seven, that's why there's seven of them.
All right. And they checked them. All right, consideration of ordinance creating the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know this probably seems confusing, and forgive me, I have a cold if y'all haven't noticed. We already have a Parks and Rec Advisory Board, however, it was one of those boards that was created by resolution, and so we wanted to codify, or the board wanted to codify, codify the Parks and Rec Advisory Board into the Code of Ordinances. So really, nothing has changed. It's made up of seven members. The Parks and Rec Director is a permanent non-voting member, and they serve two-year terms. I don't think there's really anything else that's new, their duties are listed out in that section, nothing has changed. Really, this is just to kind of clean things up and make sure that this is consistent with the rest of the advisory boards being codified in the Code of Ordinances.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion? Have a motion?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, resolution approving item two, resolution approving surplus and conveyance of personal property to other government unit pursuant to GS 160A-274, a Toro workman utility vehicles to Currituck County Schools.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-274, counties can donate an item that is no longer needed to another governmental unit, and they can exchange with, lease to, lease from, sell to, or purchase from any governmental unit, any interest in real or personal property. These are some Toro workmen's, there's two different ones that the Parks and Rec Department no longer needs, and they would like to give it to the Currituck County School System.
Mr. Chairman? I know that far as our Parks and Rec, we use their fields and stuff like that, they have a mutual agreement with tons of different stuff involved. I was on the Parks and Rec Board forever, coached forever. Where was that rap song, ever, ever? No, I'm just kidding. But we have a good working relationship with them, so I do think this is a good idea because they partner very well.
I've talked to Jason about it, it's two that they're not really using anymore, they can go without, that, you know, they're kind of just extra ones. I know the high school, I believe Moyac Middle School are the ones that these are going to go to. Their athletic trainers use them to carry the medical equipment and this, that, and the other to the fields and so on and so forth. The ones at the high school at Moyac have been less than reliable. So, this will kind of fill in for that.
I don't think anybody objects, we just need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, item three, discussion of flags on county property. I believe Ms. Rose, this is something you wanted to add.
Yes, I was approached by a citizen about how we should have flags that air government complexes, specifically the YMCA, and they were talking about the roundabout. You know, how nice it would be to have a flag with a light there. Well, then, when I rode around to other government buildings, I didn't, I saw some, but I didn't see all. I do like the idea of flags that are government buildings. So I, shall I make a motion?
Well, I think we need to have a motion to have the staff to come back with a cost and what buildings it would encompass, because when you say all county buildings, we got a utility building, do we want a flag there? So we got to define it down a little bit for staff to bring back.
And they have to be maintained and taken into. I know the BLT students do the ones, I've taken the ones down.
Unless you have a light on.
If it's a light, you do not.
What flags?
What's that?
What?
County flag, state flag, and the American flag.
Oh, an American flag.
What about, what about the state flag?
I don't think we have those, do we have state flags?
We have them at public safety and some of the other ones, yes.
Public safety, we have them, yes.
We should.
And the jail, a couple other places.
Some other buildings.
Yeah, state.
I just want to say, I'm in agreement with Ms. Rose, but I think we need the staff to come back to bring it to the main buildings. As I said, we've got, we've got utility work buildings and stuff, we're not going to put flags at that are whatever.
Well, the one, the one that was brought to my attention mainly was the one, as you enter the YMCA, that area, the animal control area, where that roundabout is, that is an area that is close to the highway. I think it would be a good idea, but I would also like for you to review our buildings and bring us back a recommendation.
Okay, well, I'm prepared to do that this evening, or at least preliminarily, if you would like.
Well, go right ahead.
We're arguing, and she's got the answer.
Yeah.
She's like, if y'all stop talking.
No, it's okay. So I can run through a list of facilities where we do currently have a flag pole. Moyac Welcome Center, the Judicial Building over at the Governmental Center, there's also a flag, a pole at Social Services, the Detention Center, this campus, Public Safety, COA Aviation, the Airport Cooperative Extension, the Satellite Office there in Grandy, Veterans Park, Water Lily Volunteer Fire Department, Notts Island Fire Department, the Notts Island Ruritan Center, the Satellite Office, and Historic Corolla Park.
So it sounds like we have a bunch already in place.
We do, I think you had mentioned previously that we do not have flag poles at the Barco or Moyac Library. So most of our flag poles are 30 feet in height, and we estimate that between installation of the flag pole, concrete work, and potentially electrical, if we were to light the poles, it would be between $8,000 and $10,000 per flag pole.
Eight to $7,000, you say?
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10, per, but that's, that's turnkey for everything.
Yes.
We do have, you know, if we're talking about the Barco Library, there is one at the high school.
Correct.
So, kind of same complex.
In terms of the roundabout, we could possibly go with a 35-foot tall pole at the roundabout. There is conduit from the YMCA to the roundabout, but we're not sure if there's electrical that runs through that conduit, so we would have to hire an electrician to come out and inspect that conduit and see if there was electric that's run through, or if it would be feasible to do that.
Yeah, I think we would like for you to pursue that and bring us back the cost and the feasibility, but like the Barco Library, I was just talking with Mr. Angel, you have trees all over the place there, you don't really have a place where you could.
Display it.
Display it properly where it wouldn't be in the trees.
Unless it was out by the road, you're right, between the library and the road.
Yeah, so I think the roundabout, and it is definitely something that I agree with Ms. Rose, I would like to see that investigated, and I think the whole board would.
Do, do we have, do we have flags at our sports, you know, air sporting fields?
At community park?
Yeah.
So I believe there are flags that are displayed at the, kind of on the fence of the field towards the back. Yes.
Yeah, just remember, wherever you hang a flag, you got to have somebody that's responsible.
That's right.
And I've noticed, like, the Veteran Park flag sometimes get a little ragged-looking because nobody's out there every day, so.
We need to replace the ones at the Public Safety Building, which, that's the third set, I believe, in two years, if I'm not mistaken, third or fourth. So I mean, I do think it's a great thing, but we have a lot of wind. And, I mean, like I said, I think maybe we need to, I don't know. I mean, I'm not against it, but I mean, who's going to take them down? I mean, like, I know I went to leave the Public Safety Building before, and it was like, whoa, BLT didn't have school today. I took the flags down, I mean, it is what it is. But I think it's going to be a lot of maintenance. I'm not against it, but it's a lot of money, it's a lot of maintenance, and money sometimes is important.
For the roundabout, we would recommend having it lit, so that we, there wasn't.
Take it down as needed.
I think it would be very, very attractive to have the American flag out there.
I think it would, and then honor, the half-massey honors certain things going on.
I would caveat to say that you should probably put more than the American flag. I would think you should put the North Carolina flag and maybe the Currituck County flag as well, being the fact that's where the Cooperative Center is, that's where the airport is. You know? I'm not really objecting, maybe a guess.
So do we want to look at two flags or all three flags?
I mean, I, I don't disagree with Selena on that.
Do we have the Currituck flag displayed anywhere?
Public safety.
Right behind you.
We do.
Right behind you.
Talking about for air citizens to see on a regular basis.
It does fly here, I'm not sure about the other facilities. Okay.
Public safety does.
Bring us a proposal back for all three flags and lighted.
And then how much would be, and then we can see how many locations it would cost.
Yeah, we want one of them that's illegal everywhere else.
We don't need, okay.
No, I think that's a consensus.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
Item four is consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose, next items, Commissioners Report, Ms. Rose.
So last week, I was able to attend the Community Day at Griggs, and I saw lots of good things going on, very impressed with the students, the staff, and the school. I also attended my bi-monthly Trillium meeting. They are getting a new health insurance provider for the people they serve. I want to give a big shout-out to our young ladies on the Currituck 10U volleyball team, our All-Star team, they won it all. They did really well.
Good.
So, I just heard about that. And coming up this week, we have a big meeting, Marine Fisheries Commission is meeting, and they are going to determine the future of commercial crabbing and bushel limits. And that's it.
All right, Mr. Paiment.
Okay, first of all, let me just say, I want to thank the county manager for the Grandy Convenience Site, getting that rolling. I've had a lot of good compliments, I took a visit there today, the attendance.
We thought you were going to say complaints, not compliments, sorry.
Compliments, but, well, no, but then the attendance, we're thrilled. The citizens there, like the way we widened it, it's going to get really paved here pretty soon. It's just, it's something that needed, and I'm glad it's finally there, and people are happy. And then next, I'm working to get, Admiral Regional Health has had some changes and some updates. I want to get a person to speak to the board regarding how the septic systems are going to be done now throughout the county, our areas, and it's a positive change. And I think they would do better explaining it than I would, so I'm going to work on getting him in there. But it's something that's going to benefit the citizens, keep the cost down, and allow us to be more convenient, it's going to be for all surrounding areas. So anyways, I'm working on that within the next couple meetings. Other than that, that's all, I just, everybody, you know, Happy Thanksgiving is coming up, be safe, enjoy your family, and eat a lot of turkey.
Ms. Jarvis.
I want to start out by congratulating three members of our 4H team that went to the national competition. I want to recognize Emerson Page to finish seventh with her speech on EQUA and respiratory systems. I can't imagine what that is about, but it sounds very interesting. And then a super shout-out to Sophia Haslop and Abby Poyer, who won the national championship in the team presentation on the importance of readiness during natural disasters. So congratulations to those three ladies, and thank you for representing Currituck very, very well. We met as an opioid advisory board on the 13th, last Thursday, and Judge Trevette was there to help us keep our recovery court effort underway. We are very excited, probation, parole, the Public Defender's Office, the District Attorney's Office, and many other important parts and components of that were at the meeting, and we are very excited to get this program underway as part of our opioid advisory board's efforts to help those people who are suffering and dealing with opioid use disorder. I also want to thank our county manager and assistant county manager, as well as other members of staff for representing us at the Outer Banks Workforce Summit on Wednesday. It was a great networking and collaborative opportunity as we focused on childcare, career planning, and housing issues across all of the Outer Banks. And the breakout, the breakout sessions and panels were great, and I hope it leads to even more discussions about housing and what we can do. can do to make sure the next generation and generations after us are thriving in this area, and then finally, Thanksgiving is coming up, if you have a warm meal to eat in a warm home, be thankful for that, and think of those who are not in such a similar situation, I encourage you to give to our local food pantries, our operation Santa Claus here in the area that will help Currituck County youth to have a Christmas, and then, if you can help support the community, Thanksgiving dinner at Jarvisburg Church of Christ, they have a great effort, they are serving a free Thanksgiving dinner to anyone in the community that wants to show up on Thanksgiving from twelve to two at Jarvisburg Church of Christ, and they also have a winter clothing closet that you may also take what you need to help your family stay warm this winter, so be thankful and give, that's what I'll say with Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Breathwaite?
Well, it's been a very interesting and eventful first few weeks on the job here, and again, I'm thankful for the opportunity to be here, I wanted to thank Ms. Rose for inviting me to accompany her to Griggs Elementary School last Friday, really had a blast, those kids were really impressive, one of them complimented me on my boots, another one complimented me on my car, and I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Christie Corbo Ryan over there, she introduced us to some of her student council students over there, and really kind of blew me away, because they, they were asking some questions that were, I mean, way advanced level, one, one of the young ladies asked me if I was the new commissioner, and I said, well, yeah, and I'm, man, are speaking, I reckon so, and she asked me which district I was from, or was I one of the two that can live anywhere, so, you know, I told her I was representing District Five in Moyacque, so really smart kids over there, really kind of made my day to go over there and, and spend a little bit of time with them, so thank you, Ms. Rose, for inviting me, and looking forward to attending more events around the county like that.
Thank you, sir, Mr. McCord?
If we could get Troy to retire, we might be to recruit him for an S R O at one of the schools, sounds like, the Christmas parade is the fifth of December, if you want to be in the Christmas parade or have a float in parade, you can reach out to myself or Cameron Lowe from the extension, you can go to the county website, the extension or myself, the parade has been a success, and hopefully it'll stay that way, it's gonna be a little different, this year we reversed the order because it's gotten so big that we need to make sure we have a little more room at setup, so we successfully have done that, lots of planning to go into it, and if you're interested, reach out to the extension office, Cameron Lowe or myself, and we'd love to sign you up, and if you just want to come to it, come to it, it's on the fifth of December, and there's probably a hundred other things, but it's gonna be a late night, and that's it for me.
Mr. Angel?
Congratulations to the high, high school football team, they had a winning season, co-conference champs, so there's that, last Monday was the United States Marine Corps' two-hundred-and-fiftyth birthday, happy birthday to all my fellow brother and sister Marines out there, Tuesday was Veterans Day, happy Veterans Day to all the fellow veterans, that's it.
We did have a good breakfast.
I have a couple things, last week, the county manager and assistant county manager, myself, and the airport manager met with the North Carolina Department of Transportation Aviation Division, they came out to see our airport, they came and talked to us about some of the ongoing projects and about what they've done in the past, and they were really, really impressed with the whole area, that, with their commercial area, the, everything that's going on out there, and I think we will be getting some grants from them for tea hangers and for repairing some of the runway, and there's, they were just so thrilled, as a matter of fact, the, the Vice Chairman said that they visited twenty-three airports and said our, our airport was the only one that checked all the boxes, that we had done everything we were supposed to do, so a shout out to Will and, and the staff, also last week, the manager and myself met with the Governor Stein's representative, P J Connolly, and we had a nice meeting with him, and the main topic of conversation was the tier system and how unfair it is to Currituck County to be considered a tier-three county, as a matter of fact, he couldn't even believe we were a tier-three county, nobody can believe we're a tier-three county.
Except the state.
Except the state, and he has promised us he was gonna get us an appointment with someone in Commerce, Department of Commerce, to help us make our case, and we also, the manager is gonna try to set up a meeting with Majority Leader Berger and House Speaker Hall, so that we can plead our case, what we're doing is we're working through the committees, and then it never gets anywhere, what we want is for it to go to the top, and then them direct the committees to fix it, that's how you're gonna get it fixed, if we get it fixed, so had a very good conversation, we talked about our issues with the beach and, um, different things, and had a good conversation, and then, county manager, I would like a work session with the engineer that is doing our wastewater treatment, if they can come to our next meeting, that would be great, I would like for them to sit down and go through what their plans are and how they're gonna do it, and when it's gonna be done, and I know they may not be prepared today to give me that information, but I feel like we're giving them several weeks to get it together, we, we really need to get that information out to the public as to status of our wastewater system, when we can expect for it to be online, so that businesses can start making decisions, I'm getting calls all the time saying, yeah, we've got this business that would like to come, but they can't come because they don't know about wastewater, and it's time to put it out in the public, I know you're doing the best you can with it, but if you tell our engineer that the Board of Commissioners won't have a meeting with them, and for them to come and, and share the information on the wastewater system with us, I think that would be great, and with that, we'll go to the county manager's report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a quick reminder that tomorrow morning, the contractor will lay asphalt at Grandy Convenience Site, and they should be wrapped up in the morning, and the site should open normally at one P M.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I went this morning and didn't have to use my four-wheel drive.
And there was plenty of room to get beside the cars.
County attorneys report.
Just one thing, I am going to the Coastal Resources Advisory Council meeting this week, it's gonna be held in Beaufort, North Carolina, so I'll be out of the office for a couple of days, but you can still reach me.
Alright, thank you, this time we need to have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to N C G S one forty-three dash three eighteen point one-one A six, to discuss personnel matters.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.